Kira Dato, welcome councillors to this continuation of the annual plan council meeting. Welcome to councillors, to staff, media and the public. I'll start with apologies, we have an apology from councillor Noon. I'll move from the chair that the apology be accepted, second to councillor Staines, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against? On to the confirmation of the updated agenda. Now, I'm going to move from the chair that the agenda be confirmed with the following changes for the following reasons. I'll confirm it as it is, accept that items eight and nine, there's a couple of items that require external advice and rather than have those people standing around waiting through the middle of the day, I'm going to move that items eight and nine, that is the stadium DVML item, be moved to 9am tomorrow morning, Wednesday. That item nineteen, which requires the attendance of ORC representatives on public transport, transport be moved to 9am Thursday. And that items ten and ten A, for which I think we're still waiting for one last bit of report, that is the EDU item, be moved to Friday at some point.
What is ten A?
Ten and ten A, I think ten A will be...
Ten A is about the governance model for the Groger and Eden partnership. We were going to put it up to the nineteenth of, nineteenth council meeting and then we realised that the resolution said that you need it before you finalise the budget, so we've worked it forward to give it to you, but because you haven't got it yet, we just said let's do both of those together on Friday.
I appreciate that, but it has to be in the agenda to be moved to then, sorry.
Yes, so to meet the ten, yep. So with those operations, I'll move that the agenda be confirmed, second to councillor Staines, do any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry on. Item three is for councillors noting, don't need a resolution.
Is that procedural, are we planning to finish at five thirty today?
We're finishing at five, I think that's, we're intending...
Even better, thank you.
Now, I will move from the chair that pursuant to standing orders three dash eight dash eighteen, that any resolution made in this section or following section of the meeting may be subject to further discussion and decision via the meeting. Second to councillor Staines, discussion, councillor Batters.
What is meant by this section exactly?
Well, anything following in the agenda, as we work through the decision-making sheet and the budget.
Would it not be tidier to have a motion to the extent that it's going to be a wrap-up discussion at the end of it?
Well, that's implied. So this is, this is the motion, and I'm moving, and it certainly implies what you've suggested.
It also implies that whatever we do in the way of a wrap-up can also be subject to further discussion endlessly. I'm just saying it's a bit loose, but I...
Well, it's working.
All right.
So, any further discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry on. Right, can I just lay out a little bit of context for these deliberations now that we've got to them, went to the submission stage? As councillors will be aware, the context for the rate that's been struck for the next financial year is that council set a three percent rate rise maximum. And in principle, I imagine, I certainly, and I imagine most of us around this table, would like to stick within that and keep faith as possible with that commitment that was made three years ago and has been reinforced since. However, we've got to be aware that some extra unfunded items have popped up in one or two cases. They could not have been reasonably foreseen when we asked staff in January to come back with no more than a three percent rise. One of them is the investigative money for public transport, for instance, wasn't foreseen there. On the other hand, some of the staff recommendations suggest taking funding from already allocated sources or savings and applying them to unfunded items. So, there are a number of variables which make it very difficult to get an immediately clear picture of exactly what might be possible within our target. And I guess further original adherence to the target for the sake of absolute consistency, but at the cost of leaving something out that we actually really all want, or we find very valuable, is not necessarily desirable either. So as we move through the decision-making, we can ask the chief financial officer's team to give us a running tally on the effect that our decisions are having on the rate target. But even then, when we get to the end, as we've just resolved, we can go back to previously considered items of expenditure and re-examine our decisions. What I think we can be pretty sure of is that there are some hard decisions to be made through this meeting. Clearly, there's not enough funding available to fund or satisfy all of the requests that we have had in front of us in the previous week. So, we need to be looking at clever ways to perhaps satisfy multiple demands from one pot or stretching lesser-than-ideal amounts and linking them with community resource to make them go further. There have also been a number of small requests that council may feel are worthy and I would like to put a small contribution on the table that might at least partially address those. This year's, that's the thirteen, fourteen years, mayor's discretionary budget is not completely spent. In addition, there is a little left in a couple of other budgets, the CEO's discretionary budget and some in the civic budget, that total's about forty thousand dollars. And I suggest that council might consider using those to satisfy one or two of the small requests for next year in areas where council, this is not my decision, I'm going to put this in front of council, may think that a small amount of financial input will make a big difference. I think we can lead that to the end, but we'll see where we are when we get there.
Thank you.
Beg your pardon?
Thank you, please, for you to draw off a bit.
You will have seen from the agenda that we start with reports on some of the big questions, particularly those that were specifically asked of submitters, and then go on to the issues and requests covered by the rest of the submissions, and as I just confirmed, we'll be finishing at five today. So, Jane, can I invite councillor Batters?
You said just now that we are looking at a number of increases that could not have been reasonably foreseen. I'm concerned that the usual elephant in the room is being sidestepped in this case. We've got three million dollars in unforeseen costs with the DVML budget, which seems to me to be routinely ignored and which councillor Thompson has publicly said wasn't expected to be within budget. Given that this is by far the biggest item of the unforeseen's, was this three million dollar blowout again from DVML, was that included in your could-not-have-reasonably-been-foreseen? Or is councillor Thompson correct in saying that it was reasonably foreseen?
Well, we will address that when we get to it on Wednesday morning at nine am, because that's when we're discussing that item. What councillor Thompson and indeed myself, I have said that we knew this was coming. I'm not absolutely sure whether we knew in January, but certainly the chief executive made it very clear to us well prior to last week that this expense was coming and that we were, that staff were working on ways to address it. And so to that extent, it wasn't unexpected, but I'm not absolutely sure about the timings to whether it was expected in January and taken into account in the...
Yes, in January, we were clear that we were going, and made it clear at the time that the review was announced, that one of the reasons that the review was being done is because we knew that they were not going to be able to meet their budget for the coming year. And that was announced at the time, we knew at that point in time that they were going to be somewhere in the vicinity of a million dollars short. And that's, we gave, I think we gave a figure of one to one point two, one to one point four, something in that order. We were not clear about their next year's budget at that point in time. So that was said at the time. They in fact have turned out to be about one point two million dollars short in their budget for next year. The proposal to pay off debt as a way of reducing their debt servicing costs and being able to use their debt servicing costs to help bridge that shortfall in their budget, that's what's been, what we said to councillors is that between then and now, we would come out, we would come up with a way of bridging the shortfall while we complete the stadium review. So, the detail of that wasn't known in January.
So the answer to your question is expected, no, it's not, right, surprise. Now, welcome Jane.
Thank you.
This is item four councillors, draft plan deliberations and consultation results. Is there anything you would like to say before, I'll throw it out as questions?
First off, I have prepared a list of requested funding that we've received since we've prepared the draft plan, and I'll hand that out before I leave the table. So that will give everybody an idea of the quantum of the requests from the civic grants reports and submissions generally. I haven't managed to finish this work entirely. I'm still needing to go back and look through the not-to-be-heard folders to pick up if there are any other requests in there. I've picked a couple up from there already, so I'll hand that out at the end. And I'd just like to draw your attention to the supplementary information memo in the package that you were handed out today. There's some information that relates to my report on the second page of my memorandum, and that's breakdown of submitters by location and community board. We just did a fairly quick and dirty analysis on submitters based on postcode and grouped them into community board groups, which might help you when you're thinking about submissions, see where they have originated from.
Thank you Jane, are there any questions? Councillor McTague?
I've got a question, and that, thank you Jane for this report, and thank you for the demographic breakdown because I, it's really helpful. In terms of the responses that we got through that, twenty-five percent, whatever it was, isn't high in... And clearly, was it, do you think that there are things that we could do to change the degree to which people are interacting with that section? Were, are there, do you think there are reasons why people weren't filling out that section?
I don't know whether people were not convinced that the information was going to be anonymous. Yeah, we're going to link things back to this direction submission. But, yeah, really apart from that, I couldn't say any other reason.
Was it, was it...
It may have been the position that it was in the submission, but it was well at the top, so, and there's several links to it, so...
In the electronic version?
In the electronic version.
It was quite clear as well, yeah, right. Does this, does the information that you've got here, do you think it will help in future years in terms of targeting specific groups that are underrepresented, is that the intention?
I don't think it's told us anything that we weren't already aware of, but it does, it gives us a basis for the significance in engagement policy work that we need to do later this year in terms of trying to target our consultation to engage those groups that we must see. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, well, I'll move from the chair, the recommendation on page four point one, second to councillor Staines, any discussion on that?
Your worship, can I add an amendment? And it's not, I don't want to be, I'd just like to move also that the council thanks staff involved in the consultation process and their efforts in streamlining and improving the process. This has been outstandingly the best response to the process that I've had in seven years and I'd like to congratulate those involved, and I'd like to be noted.
Okay, any further mover and second to councillor Benson?
Well, just to say that I think the process was certainly robust in terms of what it's yielded. I didn't know there were that many doctors in the Dean, I must admit. And that, that's germane in terms of the issue about who's responding, who's targeting, but that's not a surprise. But I do reflect on the fact there were a couple more people who presented who felt, even though I thought it was really quite positive targeting three big areas we specifically invited, one with an alternative proposals, where we specifically invited proposals, I was concerned that a number of people either because of lack of space or other reasons had the feeling that's all that's been, and all that comment was being invited about. So I just, I think we need to alert people to that in future, that, you know, everything's on the table if you like, these things were required particular attention.
Any further discussion, I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry on. Thank you Jane. On to items five, budget changes, Harris. Mark and Karen. Now, would you like to preface any questions with any further clarification or...
Up to you, your worship, whether you'd like me to take you through the changes?
I think in a very, yes, in a brief way, I think that would be useful, thank you.
So I'll take you through the table on page five point two. So that lists all the changes that we have between the draft plan and now. So the first item there is the stadium, so that's the subject of a separate report. I'm not sure if you want me to go through that now or wait till we're done?
No, we'll do that.
Okay. And so we've got debt servicing savings of seven hundred and nineteen thousand. So there's two parts to that, the first is that we've reviewed our debt levels and we are reducing our debt by fifteen million in the current year. So we basically, we won't be raising the debt, so it hadn't been raised anyway. So we'll take, we'll take away the budget for the debt servicing costs there. The other thing we've done is review the interest rate assumption. So we had an average seven percent interest rate assumption in the draft plan. Taking away this fifteen million means that we've got essentially less cheaper debt. So we've still got all of our debt that's got the fixed rates of over eight percent, but we've got less of what, what would be floating rates, the cheaper rate. And as well as that, in between the draft and now, those floating rates are a little bit higher. So the average that we're working on now is seven point three percent. So that gets us that net saving of seven hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred.
So just to clarify, that's the net figure from those two?
Yes, yes it is. So the city property change incorporates a few different items. The, there is a slight reduction in the dividend on Wall Street, given the proposed changes there, as well as that we've got some additional maintenance costs in the library building. And the human resources budget, we've had to allow additional costs for health and safety. In the regulatory services area, we've reviewed the budget that we have for LIMs and with our fee change that's proposed, then realistically, we've got another hundred thousand of revenue that'll come in, in that budget line. And the corporate leadership budget, we've reflected the new structure around DCHL and the group CFO role, so there'll be a management fee charge to DCHL that gets us a net revenue figure. The change for Toito is all to do with the Chinese garden, so that now sits in that budget. So we've again reviewed the revenue budget for the Chinese garden, the numbers are down in the current year. So we'd looked at this in November and reduced them, but we've had another look and think that realistically, we need to alter the revenue down to a more realistic level. There are a few institutions around that we've looked at the rates on. So if there's a shop or a cafe in some of our facilities, we've, we've had those reviewed. So the Chinese garden is one of those buildings that will pay more in rates. In parks and reserves, we've looked at the rates to do with the revaluation, so there's going to be more rates cost.
Sorry, are you telling me that because of the tea rooms on Toito, that's a four and a half thousand dollar rates increase?
That one specifically is to do with the Chinese garden, but there is an impact on the Toito as well.
Oh, so it's, but that covers both of the commercial operations, okay.
So we've got a rate increase in our parks and reserves. The city development saving is because we've got a one-off carry forward there from our second generation district plan review. So we'll carry forward some money so we don't need to rate for it again. In the library, we've got some savings in staff costs. And in the finance saving is that we're going to be getting a higher interest rate on any money that's left in our bank account at the end of every, every day. So those savings, well, the net position on all of those is twenty-three thousand reduction. To get to the three percent rate increase that went into the draft, there was a hundred and seventy-nine thousand applied to debt reduction. So you've still got that to confirm or otherwise, so those two amounts are two hundred and two thousand. The report also includes our proposed carry forward budgets. So we've looked at all of our projects and our managers have reviewed the timing, so our projects aren't going to be finished in the current year, we're carrying forward the funding to the next financial year. So that's going to be sixteen million that will be moving forward, moving into the fourteen fifteen budget. We've got an update to the Moskill East Development Contributions capital and that'll flow through to revised development contribution charges. I've listed the unfunded items that have come through in some of the reports that you've got on your agenda there. In terms of possible funding sources, there are three carry forward budgets that weren't approved. And so in total, we've got four hundred and forty-five thousand unallocated at this point in time. And so that money is, we have that now because it was rated for projects in the current year. And I think that's sort of all of the changes. In terms of the earthquake strengthening, so that's not taking the budget away but reflecting the fact that we haven't had any uptake in that targeted rate scheme in the current year, so we don't need to, we don't need to allow for borrowing for it for one year.
Okay, thank you. Questions councillors, councillor Law?
Caroline, I just was unsure, with the sixteen, sixteen million that you carry forward, that I assume is still tagged to projects?
Yes, it is, so there's a...
And is the expectation that those projects will be done in this year as well as everything that's in the budget?
There is the odd exception to that, most of them yes. There is either one or two projects in order in ways that we've actually moved right through to fifteen sixteen. But most of them yes.
Councillor Batters?
I'm wondering about the fifteen million dollar debt that we suddenly don't seem to need as a result of the review of cash debt and overall liquidity. Can you tell us what that fifteen million dollars was originally earmarked for? Was it seawall or bigger stadium problem? Or why did we have the fifteen million in the budget to begin with?
In terms of why we don't need to raise it, what we've done is, we've got to the end of a fairly major capital expenditure programme. So we've waited until we got to the end of that and then reviewed our position in terms of our forecast cash and our debt. And indications were that, back in January, that it was looking too high. So now we've reviewed it, since grants come on board and we're comfortable that we could live with less cash.
I understand that, that's what you said in the first place. What I would like to know is why we had the extra fifteen million in the budget in the first place? Surely it must have had, must have been tagged something?
So it will, that debt will, won't be raised on certain projects, is that what you're asking? What projects we won't be raising the debt for?
Yes, what are we, what are we not doing that we now no longer need fifteen million dollars?
No, there isn't any expenditure that's coming out, basically we've, you know, if we raised it, we would have the money sitting, we don't need it. So savings over time?
Can you say in simple terms what that fifteen million dollar budget line was for?
It wasn't for a single budget line, so it's accumulated savings over time. So we're, so that is set in the bank. We've continued to, to raise debt in anticipation of what we were going to need, but as expenditure has reduced over time, we've ended up with a bigger reserve in the bank than we need to have. Prudently, we tend to run with about twenty million in the bank. At the moment, we've got about thirty-five. So we're simply not going to raise the next tranche of debt, which brings our overall debt level down. So it's accumulated savings in time, there's no one item of fifteen million dollars that we're not doing.
So if I'm to understand it, there was fifteen million dollars essentially sloshing around in the accounts with nowhere to go? This seems rather a lot to me.
There's, there's currently thirty-five million dollars that's, we tend to have a buffer of about twenty million dollars. And at the moment, that's, that has crept up as we've continued on our forward debt raising, crept up to thirty-five million, but that's larger than we need it to be. And we're now making a suggestion to you that we step that back down to twenty million again. So we've stayed on our standard debt raising profile. What we're saying to you is, we think you should make a decision to, to step that down and reduce back to only having a twenty million dollar buffer rather than that bigger buffer.
Okay, I can understand that. But what I have a little difficulty with is, you know, looking forward and understanding that we need a twenty million buffer for something, seawall or whatever, just looking back at what we did in the previous budgets to get to a stage where we significantly, I believe, overestimated the amount that we needed to borrow. What, what was it that we so overestimated? You say it doesn't come from one single source, but...
Can I jump in there and if I'm incorrect, then correct me? But I don't think it's that we don't need to borrow it. We don't need to borrow it because we've made savings, we've got fifteen million that can substitute for the borrowing we would have done.
Lovely, which is why I'd love to know where the savings are because if we've got fifteen million dollars of unidentified savings and we can learn what they are, maybe we can identify some more.
That's what staff just spent the last year doing, is finding those savings.
Yeah, I'd like them to tell me about where they come from so we can get some more of them.
So as an example, in the current financial year, we've got a large saving in interest costs, which is mentioned in the stadium report. So, now over time, these savings have happened, but as I said earlier, we've waited to review our level of cash in the bank, you know, what would be appropriate, until we got to the end of a major capital expenditure programme. So we've had quite a few years now of quite a high level of capital expenditure. Now that we would be, we're probably down to business as usual level. We've reviewed our balance sheet, the amount of money that we have in the bank. And that's why there is fifteen million dollars. We haven't raised it, so we won't be raising it.
Understand that. The twenty million that we now have is a kind of a buffer, I think the chief executive has described. Would that twenty million, for instance, be used if we had an interest rate increase that was unexpected? Is that what, we've got that twenty billion dollar buffer?
No, so we'll look at basically what we owe versus what we're owed by other people and we'll make sure that we can cover all of our expenses and, and that's what we would make sure. So if a new project comes along, we would fund that separately, we wouldn't, we don't have a pot. Money sitting there for, I'm not into projects.
Thank you, sorry to have taken so much time.
Well, my question wasn't about that, but if I could just make a couple of comments. I think that basically, one of the things that's happened is that any organisation has a certain degree of working capital, which it, which slushes up and down depending on when the wages are paid and when the GST is paid and when somebody pays us and various other things. And so there is always going to be cash in the bank, otherwise we would have some difficulty, we'd be running a large overdraft. And what has happened is that the cash in the bank has grown into a higher figure than what we actually need. I think some of that is a little bit historical and might have represented conservative views from previous staff. Some of it is, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, some of it is savings on things like the town hall where we underspent what we had budgeted to spend, but we've raised the loans. Some of it, I'm not quite so clear about this, but for example, we've got significantly less capital spend now projected in the current, sorry, in the next financial year around Tahuna because of the change to this large thing now. in the current, sorry, in the, in the next financial year around Tahuna because of the change, the sludge thing now. Again, uh, I'm, I'm not clear whether the loans had already been raised for the whole amount on that assumption that we would be spending that and now not. But there's a, there is a range of reasons why it's got to that. But it's, it's pretty clear, I think, that it's a much higher figure than is actually needed. And, and that, that what is being suggested as a carrying figure is that, is still conservative in, in my view. I would have actually pushed it a bit lower, but, um, uh, it's not my money.
Do you want to follow up with the question you had anyway?
Yeah, my, yes. My, my question was around the, um, uh, on page four of five, the possible funding source. I'm just, I, I'm not clear and it may be that others don't care either, just, um, what that four hundred and forty-five thousand, um, actually means in terms of the decisions that we are making here today. I'm, I'm kind of not clear as to whether it's, um, cash that is potentially available to be allocated against, um, yet to be budgeted and whether it's an addition therefore to the hundred and twenty-three thousand or whatever it is that, um, or whether it's included in that.
What was the hundred and twenty-three, sorry?
The two hundred and two.
Two hundred and two?
Yeah, close.
It, it is unallocated cash.
It is unallocated. Right, thank you.
That we have in the current year. Yep.
But it-
Only unallocated if we don't have a store.
Yes, of course. Um, yeah. And, uh, but, um, to the extent that we do get through to the end of the year and it remains unallocated, is it, um, available as a carry forward in the same way as the capital carry forwards might be to apply to operational stuff?
This four forty-five is, is cash that, that we've rated for. Um, well, I think the Ocean Beach one may go back another year, but the other two certainly we've rated for in the current year.
Thank you. Councillor McTachey.
Thank you. Two questions. Um, the first is in relation to Toyota and the four point five K required for increased rates expenditure. Um, that doesn't in any way pertain to, um, a, a commercial activity that may or may not resemble a cafe.
Um, I think it, it does actually. I think it's the shop. Um, in terms of the Chinese Garden, you, you meaning? Yes, I think it's the shop.
Okay. I, I was referring to Toyota.
And Toyota, it's to do with the cafe.
Yeah. Okay. So this is because we're trading all of those establishments equally?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
And there is of course an on, an income offset line for that somewhere else.
Yeah. No, that's fine. That's clear. Um, the, the second question I had was just, um, in a similar vein to Councillor Thompson's and that is around that four, um, forty-five. When we do carry forwards, um, is it considered good practice to, um, utilise that carry forward in the same area of activity that we might have been initially anticipating the expenditure would be used? Or, um, is it, do we have some flexibility around that?
Uh, you have some flexibility as long as you pass a resolution to move it from one item, one type of expenditure to another. Then that's your call as a city councillor. So, um, so, so it would be bad to just let me do it at whim. But if you make a collective decision to do it and pass a resolution accordingly, that's acceptable practice.
So it's, it's not like development contributions, for example, which if you protect in one area, you absolutely need to apply. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Pete.
Thank you. Um, one of my questions has been asked about, I just, uh, another one I had was about that line about public transport governance and three hundred thousand. I think we're going to discuss this more fully on Friday, was it?
Um, Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday, anyway. So I'll say that just to say that, um, it seems like a quite a large amount. And I know back there in nineteen point eight, we've got a line there about backfilling, but maybe I should leave it to them.
Well, we'll have the benefit of input from the O R C at that stage as well, so maybe help. Councillor Wilson.
Um, just going back to the four hundred and forty-five thousand. What you didn't mention, and I understood, but I maybe I'm wrong, that if it's a carry, if, if there's money available that we haven't used otherwise, it's actually not a carry forward. It is in our terms of our financial strategy that we could put, pay it into debt. And so it's not, while, while it's store savings, I hope that we're not trying to tag it. We've set our rules and I, I'm just interested to know whether we're wanting to stick by them. Um, that's not a question probably, sorry.
If you don't use it, it will be an end of year surplus.
Yeah.
Okay. If there are no further questions, would someone like to move the recommendation on five point one? Move Councillor Staines' second. Councillor Thompson. Any discussion? Not, I'm going to put it all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes. Karen. Thank you, Karen. Now on to, um, item six. This is the Portobello Road and Harrington Point Road improvements forward programme options. Sorry. There's a supplementary memo that we've got there. Now, before I, um, open this up for questions, I'm going to make a statement here. Um, this issue has been submitted on in the annual plan attracting by, by far, by more people than any other. It's attracted hundreds of submissions and the basic choice is between whether to create a shared cycle walkway on the road around Portobello Broad Bay or apart from Vauxhall to Glenfellac first. I personally live on the Vauxhall Glenfellac section and as is widely known, I cycle the road virtually every day. Uh, two other councillors are affected, although perhaps to a lesser extent or whatever. Um, because of those possible conflicts, council sought an opinion from the auditor general on the propriety of those councillors, including me deliberating and voting on this issue. And the auditor general's opinion, which has been circulated previously, has cleared us to participate. However, a number of submissions implied that the issue and the choice to change the sequence from that previously decided would not have been brought up in the first place had it not been for my influence and instigation. So regardless of the reality of the auditor general's opinion, there remains the perception that I would allow self-interest to influence my vote on this issue. Further, I'm not persuaded by the argument that the only way to prove my impartiality is to firmly favour one side. So while I will chair this meeting and the discussion, I will not contribute to the discussion nor will I vote on it. Uh, recognising that as chair, however, I may end up in a position where I need to cast, I use a casting vote. But we'll get, we'll see if we get to that, but I will not be in the first instance voting on this. And I understand Councillor Bezette.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Um, yes, I, I was concerned about this, um, particular item right from the very start. So I asked the, um, chief executive officer to get a ruling from the, um, auditor general. And the, the, the ruling came back that, um, there was a perception that, that my interest and the mayor's and indeed anybody else that lived in that area, uh, was no greater than anyone else in Dunedin and therefore I could vote on it. Unfortunately, I don't think the auditor general has a clear understanding of the perception that has been created. As the mayor said that he cycles that, um, area, um, every day and as, as I do and have done for many years. And so there is a, a clear perception from people down that way and in the rest of Dunedin that I would be favoured, uh, if that, if the, if the council, uh, decided to introduce the Vauxhall to, um, a Canterbury Bay upgrade prior to anywhere else. So on that basis, um, I also will be withdrawing. I'd like to say that I bitterly resent the implication from Mr and Mrs Clearwater, I think it was, that I could in any way, uh, influence councillor's votes. I only wish it was true. I'd love to be able to look at the voter degree that they imply. Uh, it's never been true and I don't expect that to be true in the future. So, um, uh, and I'd like to remind Mr and Mrs Clearwater and indeed anybody else who feels that I might vote with something that was in my favour. I was the, uh, city council representative on the Ataga Peninsula Community Board. When we changed the configuration, I think back in two thousand and seven, when I clearly disadvantaged myself by voting for, uh, the resolution that was put forward by the community board at that time to go down to McCandrew Bay, which I thought was a very good submission and I supported that, uh, which in fact disadvantaged me because, um, that meant the area that, um, I live on was not to be done at that time. So I won't be taking part in the debate or voting on it.
Thank you, Councillor Pete.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As, as the third councillor, probably living, um, within a stone's throw anyway of, of, um, Portobello Road, I, I feel I need to make a statement about this. I am in a different situation however from, um, from the mayor and councillor Bezette. While I do accept the councillor Bezette's, um, impartial stance was, was demonstrated when he moved that the current option be included in the consultation. And for thinking of that, uh, I would have, uh, I might have said it, I can't remember now, but anyway. Um, I, yeah, I'm different since I live on the other side of the road. I live on the harbour side. And although there is some amenity value perhaps there, um, that's, that, that, uh, under, at least one of the options, um, would not happen for about nine years to be completed. So I feel I'm in a, in a different situation and, and could debate it, uh, around this table and vote on it.
Thank you. Right. Welcome, Evan, Jean, Ron. Would you like to, oh, and Tony. I thought it was another councillor there for a moment. Would you like to kick off with any context or anything, or would you want to go straight into questions?
Possibly straight into questions, Mayor Cul, um, but just making sure that, um, Jean did circulate some supplementary information.
Yes.
That everyone has a copy of that, which clarified some traffic volume and, and safety and population and school roll numbers and so forth, which may form some answers for questions to follow.
Right. Councillor McTachey.
Well, we should, I, I appreciate this information, but I haven't had a chance to read it. And I wonder whether it, in the interest of me not asking questions that are answered by this information, whether, um, you would support a five or ten minute break for us to absorb some of this?
Well, I think it's a practical way forward, um, given that there is, um, a little bit in this. So, um, what I would suggest, actually, uh, I would suggest, looking very much like the New Jersey Telephone Directory, so, um, I would-
It's not, it's, it's not all of it, no.
Right, ten minutes, we'll adjourn for ten minutes, um, to allow everyone to read that information. Right, we will, um, kick off again. Um, we're in question. Councillor Thompson.
Your Worship, could, could I foreshadow a motion which I have provided to Jenny? And a part of the reason I'm foreshadowing it now is that, um, the motion is incomplete in the sense that it would require a subsequent decision, but it might structure the discussion. So I'm just signalling it.
I'm more than happy with that. It doesn't need to be so much foreshadowed as you've just indicated. You're the, you want to move something and we'll get the question time out of the road and then we can move on to it. You'll be in the first one to queue. Councillor Van, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very pleased to see, uh, the comments made at the, at the end of Mr Allrenshaw's, uh, new report here on page three of four of the new memorandum that just come through. And, uh, towards the end of it, um, uh, Mr Allrenshaw says, "At this stage, due to the implications of the FAR decision, it is not clear whether an acceleration of the programme would be acceptable to the NZTA." Um, the, um, and, and then just, just above there, it also says, "An increase in NZTA financial assistance reduces the D C C's loan funding requirement." These are references to the NZTA I'm particularly pleased to see because my question really was of the report, especially recommendation two, where we decide on what forward programme we're going to have. Surely, is this a decision that's got to be made in conjunction with the NZTA? Because it would be fatal for us to, to decide on, on an option which the NZTA didn't fancy funding.
Certainly if there's a desire to accelerate, then NZTA would need to be an important part of that discussion.
Right. Would the NZTA, based on perhaps the condition of the road, the condition of the wall, any other technical areas, would the NZTA be more interested in having some bits done earlier than others? I believe they have in the past where, uh, some, uh, maintenance work was really needed anyway.
No, the, the project is considered in its entirety. Uh, NZTA would, uh, assuming we get over the hurdles for around penultimate costs and other requirements, NZTA would allow us to make decisions that, uh, basically suit council.
Right.
At this stage.
Yeah, no, I, I understand they're not dictating, but when you say that they, uh, you know, subject to getting over some of the hurdles, would it be appropriate, for instance, to perhaps add to recommendation two, the words at the end, "In conjunction with NZTA"? That is to say, we make a decision, but we make sure that NZTA are on board with the funding for it.
Mr Davy.
The, um, Mr, uh, Mr Mayor, the, um, as, um, even said, NZTA have already approved the overall programme of Portobello Harrington Point Road, the entirety of it from Vauxhall out to, um, Harrington Point. So they've already proved that. In fact, they've insisted that they, they considered it as an overall programme. They didn't want to fund one bit of it and then maybe not complete the others. Um, the recommendation on the, uh, the paper report is about the new, looking at the, which order you want the road to be built in. The reference in the additional memo was an anticipation of questions that had been asked about, is there some way of speeding up the programme, are you doing more of it faster? Um, and that's where we get into the, on that page three or four, that if we were to do that, that would be subject to the NZTA approval because we'd be asking them for additional funds in order to speed up.
Have you sounded out NZTA, uh, response unofficially to that? Have you got a sense of, have, have you got a sense of where they might go?
No.
I've just, uh, Mike, who's, he was, is sort of nodding. I'm just not sure what he's going to say, so.
The discussion today with the NZTA suggested that they have no fundamental problem with, um, changing the scope, the volume of works that we're doing in particular years. It is still subject to the overall funding being available through the National Land Transport Fund, um, through the N L T V process that we're about to commence into. It is dictated perhaps more by the council's decision now to limit it rather than the, um, the minimum level rather than the top level.
Thank you.
And just on that, um, what we'd be recommending though is if there isn't a desire to speed it up, that we start from fifteen, sixteen, uh, rather than fourteen, fifteen, which is the current financial year. And for that, the main reason for that is that we're fully committed for the fourteen, fifteen year, which also gives us time to work through with NZTA and fits in with their National Land Transport Programme, their funding three year cycle. So.
Thank you.
Councillor Pete.
Thank you. Just, um, a question about the, um, the slip at Broad Bay, which is one-laned, uh, Portobello Road for some months now. And, uh, and is, is, um, eventually one would imagine that the, the work that is proposed there would be, uh, would be incorporated into road widening improvement. Um, but I'm just wondering if there's an, an update we could have on the timing for that.
Uh, through the chair, uh, the slip repairers, um, detailed design is, is getting finalised and, uh, we expect all work to be completed. It'll be the tail end of this calendar year. So it's November, December, two thousand and fourteen.
Is that on all sections?
Uh, no. Uh, it's the, it's section just near Fletcher House. It's about two hundred metre section where we had a, a significant, uh, slip and, and the road is down to one-laying line.
So it's just the, the question, the question that's exercising me is the status of the design, design work on all the sections.
Uh, the, the design work's all done. We've got, waiting for the resource consent decisions.
Sure.
So.
But everything is designed now, ready to go.
Uh, I'm sort of getting, might have a couple of different questions here just to-
Hold that one and you answer the one you thought you got first.
Uh, yes, please, slip at Turnbull's Bay, concrete.
Turnbull's Bay, by Moirangie Street?
Yeah, that's the one. Now, we're, so that's, uh, it's quite an elaborate, um, um,
reconstruction of the, of the edge of the road there with a lot of rock hauling. Does that allow for the widening to incorporate, um, the cycle and walkway?
Uh, through the chair- Through the chair, yes, we will have an extra three metres of width which will be used for a shared walkway cycle way.
Councillor Benson.
Well, just that as we discuss various options or not, it's important as part of the discussion to know the status of the design on other sections that people are advocating for acceleration. So for example, is the design work finished on the section from Vauxhall to McAndrew Bay?
Through the chair, the only design work we have completed is the works 14, 15 out at Harrington Points, which is section E on the fly that went out of Daniel Plan. There has been no detailed design work done for any other section.
Any other section?
That is correct. We're waiting for guidance from council about which one to tackle first.
Councillor Wilson.
I've got three questions, or maybe four. Our first question is, in one of the submissions it said, talked about moving almost seven hectares of soil for the reclamation required. And have you any idea, A, how many truck movements that is, or where that spoil will be coming from to do that work?
The, I don't have the figures on, but the councillor Wilson, I do recall that the extent of reclamation is in the order of six to seven hectares, correct? The bulk bill for that, the sources could be from beneath inquiries or from inquiries on the peninsula. That's all I can say with certainty.
I'm going to ask this question in two parts because I think they have a bearing on each. It's very clear to me that there are some costs, whichever way we do this, in realigning the best plan or the new plan for how this will look on the road. So we want to have the road by the cliff, then the cycle way and then the walkway. That isn't what we've got in any part at the moment and I want to understand the cost implications of starting at one end back and reconsidering it, or whether it's cheaper going in one direct from the start and out with the fixed and correct design, is the first part of the question. The other one is, if there are any savings for doing this subject to NZTA approval in a quicker and almost continuous fashion?
The answer to the first question, we will have to do some retrofitting for work. Sections that have been widened already at McAndrew Bay, for example, the cost for that will be managed within the current budgets we have indicated in the LTP. So hopefully that answers.
Well, okay, if you start at the other end, will you start with the optimum design or will you start with the design you've got now until you've got it all fitted and then retrofit the whole thing?
I understand, sorry, I pick it up. No, as from now, we will be implementing the new style of configuration and when we meet up with some of the older sections, we will then retrofit those sections, so it's, will get sorted out in a fairly logical manner.
Thank you.
Councillor Cowell.
I too have three questions, I think. Am I right in assuming that if we were of a mind to try and accelerate the programme, we would want to do it subject to NZTA for two reasons. One of them, as to whether they would fund the accelerated programme according to their, what did you call it, the national, whether it would be in the national budget, as it were, and secondly, whether, what percentage they would fund, because if they bring it forward and they know then that they're funding 59% or something, which if they did it in five years' time, they'd be funding 55% of or whatever. Presumably we'd want to know both those things in general, whether they would fund it earlier and secondly, at what percentage.
Through the chair, yes, NZTA will have quite a number of questions and they'll want clarification on what we may be proposing and how that affects their funding sources. You know, they haven't got unlimited funds and they have to show restraint and imprudence as well, so that will be quite a discussion that Mr Harrison and Jean will, and himself I guess, will have with them and it's probably the next step.
Yeah, so we'd need to make it.
Yes, so it will be an important part of.
Secondly, how robust do we expect this budget to be?
The figures in the long term plan?
Yes, the, I mean, we know more about it now because we're already sort of into it. Have we got confidence in it? Because once we start saying things like, you know, it's only going to cost $63 per ratepayer or something, if we're going to get into something, we do want to have an idea of what, not only what they will do for us, but a reasonably robust idea of what it will cost us.
Yes, we're, through the chair, we're fortunate that we have got a track record with this sort of construction and we've got some very consistent construction rates, so we've got a high degree of confidence in the figures that are in the long term plan.
Excellent. And third and last question, if we're asking NZTA to do an accelerated plan and get them to put up for us to be budget masters in earlier, a lot of money, does that like have any effect at all on what they would do for the Port Chalmers end of things? Because we've also had people submitting on that, how about doing the other side? And we certainly have an interest in things on this side, so would us asking them to do us a favour and get on with it sooner have any effect on the Port Chalmers end?
Through, through putting the projects up through the NLTP, those two projects are different funding categories, so they shouldn't have an impact.
Okay.
Councillor Hawkes.
Thank you. My question is picking up from councillor Benson Pope's. If the design work is yet to be done for these sections, do we have the resourcing available to us to do the design work on multiple sections simultaneously?
That will be a challenge with an accelerated programme. Yes, there are limited resources underneath for professional services and that's something we have to work through as part of the discussions of accelerated programme was council's preferred option as well as physical works, the contractor and your resources to manage an accelerated programme.
Please, I think, though if you were to accelerate the programme, we'd also look at our procurement approach. We might be a little bit more, I think we're going to spend, aim to spend, you know, $5 million in the road, if that's, say if we double it, for example, then discussions with the contractors and the consultants, I think, would be needed to figure out how we best do that, to make sure that it's done in the most efficient manner. But we will have a, there is a constraint, but there would be, the speeded up programme, our recommendation wouldn't start until 15, 16, which would give us a year, I suppose, to work through some of those issues.
Councillor Benson.
Just in respect, thank you, your worship. In respect of your comments about retrofitting earlier of existing work, is it possible to retrofit the arguably inadequate path between Portsmouth Drive and Burns Point, the shared path as it currently exists? So in terms of the wider issues being the design of a separate cycle and walkway, we currently have a shared path at the most populated end of, which is problematic as it are not.
The section that councillor Benson Pope's referring to is something that has not been tasked to me at this stage. There is no proposed improvements for that section.
Thank you.
Just clear, I think when retrofitting, we're talking about the markings on the top of the road, so McAndrew Bay, to change the road markings on top to match up with the two lanes, cycle lane and footpath on the outside. And but beyond Portobello, again taking out this, the two cycle lanes replaced with three metre paths. So it's a road marking component rather than a reconstruction.
Councillor McTavish.
Sorry, can I just follow that up? It just seems to me, and I want to be really clear on this, that there is a major design issue. If now the state of the art design is where possible, a separate walkway, two separate paths, separated paths, so to avoid obvious conflict, and yet the original work that was done in the harbour for lots of historical reasons, didn't generate enough space to make that possible, and now we're talking about wherever the development occurs and having a squeeze point in situ at the most traffic, potentially most highly trafficked end of the cycle anyway before it hits Portsmouth Drive. Is that not a problem in the overall design?
Well, it is, clearly, because it is a constraint there and I suppose it reflects what was a state of the art design at the time, which is pretty, you know, well received. Under a current programme, if you take the current status quo though, the earliest that we could fund that is about 10 years out, because the priorities, if you take the priorities as they currently are.
Thank you.
And under the other suggestions around speeding up, it might bring it back, but that would be, I suppose, another element.
Thank you.
Councillor McTavish.
A couple of questions. The first one's quite specific and the next in relation to the slip at Turnbull Bay. And I'm just wondering, the extent of the works there and how far you're likely to be progressing, that particular part of the cycle walkway, is it going to be 10 metres that we're talking or is it going to be more like 40? Is it going to be that whole slope of Turnbull Bay or?
Through the chair, it is a 200 metre section. It will just simply end, will be disconnected typically at each end until such times as we complete the other work. So it's quite a long length.
So it would extend from the blind corner, the 35 K?
It starts at that corner you're describing, yes.
And would extend down to the Bacon Street or down the bottom?
No, it stops approximately 200 metres before Bacon Street.
Okay, halfway up the hill. Okay, thank you. Well, my second question is more about, just trying to get my head around the potential financial impact of an accelerated scheme. And I appreciate that we have, Attachment Sits has got some numbers in there, but what I, I guess I'm struggling a little bit with here is, hits a bigger picture of that in terms of our long term debt picture and umbrella and our desire to bring that long term debt down. I would value some comment from our financial team on that. I appreciate, it may not be possible, you may not have done that work, but yeah.
I guess, if accelerated work, you're just going to bring that debt forward, so that means, I'm sure Jenny can have the more debt on the books and wood, which will also then have impact on the access bill that we're planning. But long term, you know, it comes back to the conversation about the subjects we can get from council, from transit authority.
Yeah, look, I understand and appreciate that. I guess I was perhaps just hoping for, and again, maybe it's unfair to ask this of you, but in the context of our financial strategy and in the sense that we are wanting to hit 200 million in 2020, whether this is going to be, yeah, it might mean that our debt peak is put off for another year. I mean, that's the sort of information that I would like and you may not have done that work. Yeah. Thank you.
What we've tried to do here is just give a very initial assessment of the implication. There hasn't been time to build it into the long term plan and again, our recommendation would be that if you're looking to accelerate, it would be from the 15, 16 year rather than the 14, 15, and that would then be part of the long term plan consideration and be able to report back around the impact of that versus the debt and everything else. So it was really just a very initial assessment, but I think it's some feel for what it might look like for you.
Councillor Wilson.
Two more issues. First one, it depends to me that this is a safety project and road improvement and there are two parts that make that up. One is allowing people to walk and cycle safely and I'm thinking we're confusing two issues and the other one is speed of driving and how many are not competent to drive on that road. And I think we're actually possibly mixing two issues together and the statistics we've got are not necessarily the same. And I'm just wondering, has there been any consideration or would you think that it'd be worth considering, a number of submissions have suggested it, either, depending on which areas we do first, a variable speed limit especially around the Portobello School area of 30 Ks as opposed to the current 50, I think it is, and in the Vauxhall to Glen Fellic section, no passing lanes to prevent the situation that many cyclists have of cars coming towards them on the wrong side of the lane, just not being seen by the cyclists. It was, a number of submissions said that. Vauxhall, having no passing lanes there that would prevent, the, the number of submissions spoke about how scary that was because, and I just want to, are those possibilities to add in whichever process we go?
I'll answer the easy one first, the passing lanes. I think it's something we definitely could consider. And I've had a discussion with Lothc Calas in the past about that. Terms of the 30 K variable speed limit past Portobello School. In terms of the 30 K speed limit past Portobello School, we do have 40 K variable speed limits. We assess those for all schools around the city and what they basically rely on is to have a certain amount of activity on the side of the road for the motorists to actually realise why they need to slow down and then you also need, also need to have a certain speed profile to show that there's benefit in actually slowing that traffic down and Portobello School didn't meet that criteria.
Even with a blind rise from the south to north there?
Correct. It's just, basically what they've done is the speed zones are done over a length, not just for a specific site. We have met with Portobello School in the last couple of weeks and we've identified a few issues that we believe that we can fix in the short term and we've also had a number of suggestions made which were fed to Evan to fit, feed into this project.
Okay. The last question, your worship. Tony, can you explain, if you may, the timing, if we wanted to speed this up, the process we'd use, is it a long term plan consultation or would you consider it might be a special consultation which takes it outside of that but feeds into the long term consultation plan?
Oh, I think my view would be, as I said, with Jean and his team are fully committed to the 14, 15 year, we've got $25 million of expenditure, we've got Harrington Point to do. Our ability to speed up in the 14, 15 year is quite limited at the moment. So our recommendation would be that it would be part of the 15, 16 long term plan, which also allows for dealing with the questions that councillor McTavish has raised about the impacts on debt. Would also allow us to deal with NZTA. We haven't had, I don't think we've had a detailed conversation with NZTA, but we'd want to pitch it carefully because we're one of the councils where our far rate declines over time. So they may think that we're looking to increase our spend to maximise the NZTA contribution rather than responding to a priority safety issue. We need to catch that carefully. But that would be our recommendation, I think. Not deferring the, not saying don't speed up, but we need to figure out how we do that. It would also give us, I think, time to look at how we procured it, because we might, if we went to a contractor and said, look, we want it built in a short period, that may reduce our costs, may not, but there's a variety of different ways potentially we can look at.
Sorry, the subsequent question to that is, if we did a special consultation just on this, albeit feeding into the long term plan, the advantage of that would potentially be that you could almost start on the first of July 2015 on your next project. If we leave it to the next consultation, then that process may not.
I'll leave you, you may want to judge that because one of the questions that's come up before though around the council table, we're looking to bring forward expenditure that has an impact on future years, is that you're not able to consider that increased expenditure against the other priorities in 15, 16. Effectively, you'd be looking at prioritising potentially a spend on this when you don't know what 15, 16 year's holding in terms of all the other projects. So what we've tended to do over time is to deal, leave those sort of discussions as part of an overall picture so you can look at the overall rate impacts, because you might make a decision to increase the expenditure on this and then we find 15, 16, we've got other major problems, which then create other hidden rooms, so.
Councillor McTavish.
Sorry, just one more and that is in relation to the centres upgrades that the city development team will be doing and the amenity programme, has any of that been considered, given that I imagine it would be ideal if there was work hit. considered, given that, I imagine it would be ideal if there was work happening in Portobello and Broad Bay within the city development budgets, to ensure that that was in some way correlated with the timing of the work?
We haven't, we haven't been able to do that within the timeframe of this, trying to work through. Our focus for this was around the prioritisation, or in terms of the order, if you like. We haven't looked at the other centres' budgets upgrades to know how they might or might not fit in.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Wilson.
I'm sorry, some of us were out on site this morning. And the one question I had, having seen a school bus arrive with a number of children on board, is understanding, do we have any idea of how many kids are picked up by the school buses at present? Not that we want to undermine those school buses being a service, it may not be there if we put cycleways in. But yeah, do we, we don't know the quantum, we've had a lot of statistics about how many children are at each school, but it would be interesting to know how many come by bus already.
Buses to those schools or buses into town on?
To those schools.
I don't know, sorry.
Counselor Thompson. What was that?
You were about to ask about a motion, I was about to ask about a question.
Well, then you may want to, I understand Jean has got the motion. Now, what I propose to do is ask Counselor Thompson to speak to this. Oh, sorry. You've got some questions?
I do have.
Yeah, hold that forward. Counselor Thompson.
Following up on Counselor Wilson's questions about the truck movements and the six to seven hectares of fill that would be required for that area out of Broad Bay. And looking at the area yesterday, is there a possibility of using fill from out there a little more aggressively in the sense of, like at Willers Rock and shaving off a corner there and around the Odeca Fisheries? That would speed up or assist with the development?
Certainly, our consent application was, we just focused on the reclamation and those quantities. We have not done any investigation into where the rock source may be that reclamation works. We tend to leave that up to the contracting industry, but having to that, it's, we, a project of this scale, we need to keep an open mind about whether there are potentials to find alternative sources that may bring some cost savings to council.
Okay. And with the volume of like six to seven hectares, how many?
Six to seven. Six to seven.
Six, two, seven. How, how many truck movements would you anticipate that being?
200 there is a queue. I don't have the figures in front of me, Counselor Wiley, but I can make them available to all councillors.
But the six to seven hectares is the area.
The area I'm. Not front of me, three metres. Give us a price at the same time, Doug. Counselor Lord, there's an indicator it could be between 40 to 50.
Forty to 45,000.
Thousand. It's a significant number of movements. It could be truck and trailer units, but it's a big number regardless.
It's a bag of a very big cigarette pack.
Perhaps cyclists could carry some rocks out or something, to help on the bike.
Okay, to follow up on that then, is what would it, how long does it take to get a consent to look at opening up a quarry or opening up an area where you can get fill frosted or material frosted?
I haven't gone through that process myself, but it's, I would allow 12, up to 12 months to go through a consent process to either open up existing quarry or, or a new source. It's quite a process and it'll be notified, so it could drag on. I've done the answer.
Okay, no problem. Is there suitable material to be accessed, do you think?
The peninsula is volcanic origin. There will be silver rock sources out there, yes.
If we can, I suppose one of the things, we talked about procurement a little while ago, and I think it would be, I'd be too keen to, with the guys, with the team, to talk with the contractors, give them early advance notice of what sort of volumes and things they're looking at. We wouldn't, I think ourselves, look to apply for consent for, to open up a quarry, we'd leave that to the contractors to work through. But perhaps by giving them advance, and giving them some certainty of the amount of work that's coming up, they may make some choices. Hard difficult to say.
Counselor Vandis.
Just further to the recent questions, are there any proposals in the long-term plan to take some of the really sharp corners out, which might realise substantial quantities of rock that were there? I can see us coming in for a fair amount of criticism if we end up, for instance, taking more of saddle hill out and dropping it in the drink out of Peninsula only the year after to start chopping bits of the Peninsula off and then not having anywhere to throw them. Do we have any long-term plans to take some of the sharp bends out of the road that's out there? There's a lot of rock in some of those bends.
The resource consent application we lodged with the Targa Regional Council, we are doing corner improvements to ease some of those sharp bends, particularly, you know, the out-of-context curves or high accident rates, which Ron and his team have identified. So that's catered for, but it's all catered for with additional reclamation rather than taking land off private property owners, or we have a problem with instability along Portobello Road with the banks there. And we believe the best option is reclamation, where we'd loathe to touch any of those rocky out props. The locals have found those rocky out props quite appealing and are quite characterful. So we, at this stage, we've not pursued that.
Thank you.
I've drafted a resolution, which I've given to Jean, so I assume she'll put up in a moment. You'll notice that in the interest of not being the first person to get shot by one side or the other, that point four remains incomplete. But what's become very apparent to me, both from the submissions that have come through and from time that I spent down there over the weekend trying to get my head around some of these issues, was that it doesn't matter which side of this particular debate you might be on, right is on your side. It's just that the dollars don't quite extend to solve all the rights as they're currently structured. And you can argue about the amenity value versus the risk and those kinds of things. But the problem, there is clearly a serious problem in each of those areas. And if, if you feel that perhaps some of the arguments around Broad Bay and Portobello have been a little bit amenity-focused at times, there's no doubt in my mind that the section between Broad Bay and Portobello was one of the most dangerous on the road. I think the accident statistics support that, it does just observation when you drive around there. Equally, the arguments for doing the Vauxhall to McCandrew Bay section first have significant merit. So I've tried to craft a solution that might enable us to both focus the debate as well as coming up with the resolution. If I can just go through it. As staff have already pointed out, the assumptions in the long-term plan around the cost of this project, the cost to council of this project are greater than it now appears they will be, because the FAR rates were more conservatively expressed in the long-term plan budgets than it appears they now will be. And so there is a potential, not a potential, there is a real saving to council over the full course of the project. Now, clearly, we can argue about where the nature of that saving ought to end up. And there will, but there may well be those who feel that if there was a saving to be made, it should be directed somewhere else in councils, and they can argue that over time. But my view is, we had budgeted to spend a certain amount on this project, and it's now clear that we could do what we had budgeted to do at a, at a lower cost to council. Secondly, that, I've, I'm suggesting that with that in mind, that council staff remodel the budget to allow for the Broad Bay, Portobello and Vauxhall, McCandrew Bay sections to be done at the same time or as close to as possible. Now, in the, the spreadsheets that you received last night and the further information that's come out today, there are assumptions that are in those spreadsheets around the relative balance of cash to loan contributions in each year. You can play with those. You can increase one up and the other goes down, and you can look at the overall cost of this project as it is spread through the life of the project. In my view, it would be legitimate to examine whether or not you could alter those ratios in the term of the long-term plan to enable the, both projects to be done, as I said, roughly at the same time. And you would, I think, still be within the overall budget that we had in the, for the overall project. And you would, you would be able to do that, I believe, over the next 10 years in a way that did not increase rates. But just before I walk into Counselor Vandis' carefully-laid trap, you would, I'm just spiking your guns, mate. You would, at the end of that project, and this was done very late at night on the back of the same cigarette packet that Counselor Lord just used, so I don't wish to be held to it, but you would, I think, have about a million dollars more debt at that point in time than you would have budgeted to have at that point in time. And I'll come back to that. But the cost of that debt over the course of the project, I believe, would still be less than the savings in the overall budget. Now, that, of course, begs the question is, if that were possible, and if staff in doing the modelling said it were possible, and NZTA were amenable to it, where does that leave us in terms of our financial strategy? Well, that's slightly difficult to answer, because we have a financial strategy that goes out so far and only so far. And to that extent, we can write whatever we want for Safari. But, but I think the key point is that we, and we've got a financial strategy at the moment that says that by 2000, help me, 22, 20? Twenty. We will have, we will have a debt level no greater than 200,000. Million. 200 million, sorry. That would be a lovely thing. 200 million. The point, the point at which, by my very rough modelling, and it is very rough modelling, that extra 1 million is still sitting there, would be out more around 2026, when we're carrying a debt level of more around 150 million. So my, my view is that you would be able to rework this project at no additional cost and at little or no additional impact on rates through the next 10 years. But you would have an impact in terms of pushing some debt repayment into that period where we have already well below the, the financial, where the financial strategy would have us. So those points, one, two and three, almost stand on their own. If there were support for one, two and three, then four becomes essentially unnecessary. However, if, well, it doesn't become unnecessary because of the, I'm sorry, if the staff do the remodelling and say, no, this doesn't work, or NZTA takes a look at it and says, no, we won't accept that, then you still have to make a decision. So my thoughts were that if we were to make a, if we were to come to a view about points one, two and three, it would help to shape a decision, but we will still have to put where I've got those question marks, an option in the event that we're either unable to agree on one, two and three, or, or subsequent work by staff means it's not possible. The other advantage, I think, of this motion is it gives staff time to do that work. I'm really worried about trying to do all of this on the hoof as we, you know, and coming to some sort of decision in the course of this particular set of negotiations. I feel it's really pressured, we could make some horrible mistakes.
Right. So here's where we've got to. I need a retrospective secondary. Counselor Staines, right, secondary Counselor Staines. And what I think would be constructive now is to open this up, questions of both staff and the mover to clarify any of these issues. And then we'll revert to discussion. So if everyone's comfortable with that, can we stick to questions at the start? Because I imagine there's a few questions of the mover, and there'll be questions of staff as to the implications of the motion. And then when we've canvassed those, I think it would be better to do that first, rather than have them jumbled up with discussion. So, secondly, Counselor Staines, let's stick to questions. So Counselor Pete, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Questions? Counselor McTavish?
Yeah, you wish, and I don't know if the mover's able to answer this, but I guess what, where my query lies is around what it does in the immediate years after we make this decision. So 15, 16, 16, 17, 17, 18, in terms of the debt, the total debt that council is holding and the relative implications for interest. Because I think, looking at our financial plan, or our financial strategy, those will be, or they are likely to be difficult years in terms of balancing priorities. So I don't know whether your back of the cigarette envelope modelling enables you to answer those questions, or is it your intention that those sorts of answers be brought forward, along with any remodelled process to the NCLTP for discussion alongside other priorities?
Both, actually. I think that you can restructure the, the loans versus, it's the cash that we rate for, in essence. The loans versus cash ratio in those early years to keep the rate impact relatively as it is in the, in the current, to have no, no little impact. And by little, I mean a few thousand either way. But you will bring forward clearly additional debt. And, and there is additional cost associated with that, but that again is still affected by how you structure those two things. So I, I, I think that is possible, but clearly it comes down to staff having to work through and say, well, in practice, what will this actually mean? And, and you, but by definition, you would have to bring some of your borrowing forward.
So given that, and given the uncertainties around it, would, would the mover and second to be open to changing either two or three, such that it indicated that this remodelling would be brought back to council for council's consideration in the light of LTP and LTP priority setting?
Right. That was, yes is the answer. I mean, that was kind of implicit in what I was writing, but if I hadn't detailed it, then yes.
Counselor Calvert, do you have a question?
My question is the sort of, what springs to mind is weasels words, but they're not weasels words. But in, for instance, two, where it says as close to as possible, and three, where it says no or minimal impact, I'm thinking if I was a rate payer and I was reading this and I cared about it, I'd be thinking, great, they're all happening at the same time. And I'd be thinking that they're happening now. And if I was in Broad Bay, I'd sort of be quietly confident that at the same time meant probably me slightly ahead. And when it says no or minimal impact, I'd be thinking, great, the rate payers aren't going to pay anything extra. And then I'd go to four and I'd be really pissed off because mine wasn't the section that was mentioned in four. And I'd think, actually, that's all not quite going to happen. And I'm just concerned that saying at the same time or as close to as possible doesn't give the rate payers any idea of what that means. And no or minimal impact, if it really means sort of effectively nothing. I mean, we've had the, how much extra on our rates, and it's very nice, the idea that it's not going to cost. it's not going to cost anybody any extra, but if we're giving people the idea that it's going to have no impact on people's rates, I think they'll be annoyed if it does.
So councillor, what's the question?
The question is, can we change those two concepts in the middle of there so as they mean something to people that we're prepared to stand behind?
Okay, the mover? Well, the reason I worded them as they were is because I don't think we can at this point in time, I mean, this, we got these spreadsheets yesterday late afternoon, so there's been no time to talk with staff about it other than very cursory manner. And and that's why we'd ultimately have to come back here, but if we don't put something in there, then then we're stuck for another year. So what I'm trying to do is to say, well, because nothing's going, it's not going to happen until fifteen, sixteen anyway, so, but we need to get something in there so that staff have got a a a plan, and so we've got a worst case scenario in there, and we're giving them the time to work on a better case scenario, which would have to come back for approval when we understood it completely. And I'm the first to acknowledge that at this point, it's it's not, I do not understand it completely, I just think that it's possible.
Can I just also add to that, that I would have thought number four addresses that, because in the event that this cannot be achieved, means that if staff model it, come back with some figures, and if it isn't close to it, then it's a no-go. That's the point, I would have thought.
Could we perhaps put within, sort of within five years or something on top, to give people an idea that of what they might expect by acceleration? What, when they say at the same time, what what they're really wanting it done is sooner. So if we're aiming for sooner, then if you say to everybody, as soon as we can do all the sections, then they know that, and within five years, then they get a sort of an idea?
Well, can I, can I ask the mover and secondary to consider that? But it's more like, it's more discussion than a question, so let's hold that or discuss it with the mover, but I'd like to move on and clarify any misunderstandings or whatever first, and then we'll come back to discussion. So councillor Benson Parker, did you have a question? Councillor Staines, did you have a question?
I I go to use my Get Out of Down card, but but in an honest way, I asked our chief executive whether it might be possible to get the modelling refined, at least from the city side, to give us an idea of whether our our financials would work, that won't clarify whether NZTA will join the party, but that, by the sound of it, that could be available for us by Friday, which would mean that during our wash-up, we would have a better idea of whether the one, two and three are viable from our side or not.
Bearing in mind, it's a it's a fairly intense job to keep on top of all the decisions you make in the next two or three days, so there's quite a lot of modelling going on by the guys over on the far side, but we'll throw this one in the mix so that at least we're starting to work out an indicative order.
So just to clarify the implication of that, that doesn't mean that we can't continue with this, we'll just know more by the, you know, this states an intention, we'll know more by Friday, so that doesn't preclude continuing to discuss it and maybe, do you have a question?
I do have a question, it won't preclude me from history for someone to be sent back to later to matter on the table, I presume, if I ask a question. Practically it doesn't, if I ask a question, it's not seen as being part of the debate if we need.
No, no, I've indicated quite clearly, I want to get all the questions out of the road, then we'll go into standing orders and debate and discussion.
The question is for Richard, I think, and whether you're prepared in the modelling that's going to be looked at or for a debate later on, for consideration for targeted rate for the areas that benefit most from this. And I appreciate that that does therefore have a rates benefit, a rates effect, but in light of submissions that have come equally from Waterborne Saddle Hill, that they want some infrastructure improvements, this would possibly preclude other decisions on other infrastructure that unless we do actually consider another rating model potentially.
I saw it as said as a bit tangential to my motion, but I I wouldn't support a targeted rate. I don't know who you would target. I drive down there regularly to get an ice cream, especially when I'm pissed off about something, you know, I mean, I live in, and I live in Highgate, so I'd better ice creams down there. You only get one on a stick, yeah?
Are there any, councillor Lord?
Yeah, look, I I just picked up on the back of Kate's question there, but I'm not suggesting necessarily a targeted rate, but I do wonder if we are going to have a special rate, we should have it as a UAGC so it affects all people equally. Because I'd much rather see an UAGC that costs everyone ten ten dollars a year.
We're getting into discussion here, and in any case, if it's a, if it's a any kind of a rate, the increase in rates is referred to in the in the motion, so it doesn't matter what kind of rate it is. If this has got to have, you can't say that it has no effect on rates and then then introduce a universal rate on top and say it's not the real rate. So, I mean, clearly it's taken into account. I would have thought.
Yes, although just to be clear, I did, I didn't say it had no effect on rates. I said that during the term of the current LTP, it had no effect on rates.
No, but I like, no, I'm picking up a number four, that minimal impact on rating.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, councillor, any other questions?
Well, this is not the debate, but I wonder if the mover would find it acceptable not to include a specific decision about prioritisation in item four. From the point of view, the the tension and the aggro that hasn't been caused already is because we've trying to reprioritise or prioritise two areas. And it may be that this is doable, but it's just that if you then have a gob each way and decide what, whatever it might be that council supports, and I don't know what that might be, then you're not actually improving on that position, especially if by some, if the first four points are achieved.
Look, I, given the chief's undertaking that it may be possible to get this data by Friday, then I'd be perfectly happy with that. I suppose the reason I phrase it, because I I was concerned that staff might be being asked to make some sort of decision on the bottom amongst everything else, and that's what I was trying to avoid.
Can I ask, the implication of what you've just said is that we would put one to four and not have five, and I'd need to ask the chief executive what the implications of that would be for staff in terms of what they would know what they were doing or not. I think that needs to be teased out a little.
Yeah. I I wonder with regard to one to three, that whether, if you'll just be with me, whether the best process might be to leave those lying on the table, continue with today, tomorrow and Thursday, and by Friday, as we draw into a close, see where staff have got to with their capacity to model those changes, given everything else that's going on, and at that point in time, have a look and see whether we have anything intelligent for you, and if we don't, we may want to make a different, a different process going forwards, whether we've in fact been able to do it in this short space of time, because we haven't attempted to do it to date. Does that seem reasonable to you, CFO? Yes, he's got wide eyes and a hopeful expression. I mean, this is fairly complex to just do on the hoof, and they can get best attempt, but.
Okay, now, there's still some, I think what we'll end up doing today is laying, leaving it on the table, laying it on the table, but there are still some questions, so I want to exhaust any questions, even if we don't have the answers now, because they will know what extra questions are. Councillor Pete?
Thank you, your worship. Just picking up on councillor Calvert's question of of a timeframe, I mean, we're doing well with the money side of things, probably keep it within, you know, reason, but we don't have that that acceleration that we're we're looking for here to take advantage of of the higher FAR rates. I mean, that's what we're looking at. So I was just wondering whether at the end of three now, we proceed with two above within some sort of timeframe, and that can come back, you know, from start, and I'm thinking nineteen eighteen, twenty eighteen nineteen, something like four years away, you know, just to give a, just to give an indication, I mean, it's a target, I mean, that's all.
Sorry, it was clearly my intention that whichever was the second priority, which we may not yet have to define, would be being brought forward rather than, you know, number one, waiting until we had enough for the other one.
Okay, if that's all the questions exhausted, and there's a will to lay it on the table, I need to take some advice on who can move that procedural motion. Councillor Hawkins, has spoken, would you like to move that it laying on the table?
I'm happy to move that, yep.
And does it need a secondary? Um, councillor Hall, would you like to second the motion to lay it on the table since you haven't spoken? Good, thank you. Being a procedural motion, there's no discussion, I'll put it all those in favour, please say aye. 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 Carry on. Thank you.
We do have a clarification on truck movements of ninety-six.
Order, order, sorry, councillor Wiley?
We do have a clarification on truck movements of ninety-seven thousand five hundred.
Ninety-seven. Okay, we'll have a quorum, so we'll continue. Now, we're on to item seven, socially responsible investment, Waipori Fund. Who's going to be at the end of the photograph? Would you like to contextualise this for us, or do you want to go straight into questions on the basis of your report?
I think straight into questions.
Right, councillors, questions. Councillor Bakers?
Is it possible just to get over this recommendation by formalising what we had as an unofficial policy anyway, and not spend a lot of staff time and money doing?
Is that a rhetorical?
It's a leading, it's a leading question, but a question nonetheless.
It's rhetorical and leading. Councillor agrees. In that regard, you get the answer just to the question.
Yes.
Councillor McTavish?
Well, I've got, I've sent a draft motion through to the genie, when you're ready, worship, but the question that I have just pertains to the twenty percent materiality threshold, which is suggested on seven point four. Is it the case that this may be appropriate for some industries and less appropriate for others?
Yes. This could be a short discussion. The the thing that worries me is if, I'm trying to look at this from a practical point of view, if you have a threshold that is too low, you're not actually going to get the information on the companies. So the accounting standards require once you've got a certain threshold within a segment, you have to disclose the surplus or the income from those particular industries. If that threshold is too low, you're not going to know, one, that they're actually investing in that area, and two, whether they're actually, how close they are to the threshold. So probably, I think the best example would be countdown supermarkets, you know, they get about ten percent of their revenue from alcohol. So if you had the threshold at ten percent, are you saying, we don't think that's an appropriate investment to make because we don't like alcohol or we don't like tobacco? And and I don't know how much they get from to, from tobacco. So it's trying to have a practical solution, that you want that threshold at an appropriate level. But that could change for different industries, because you might say, actually, we want nothing to do with munitions, and it doesn't matter what the threshold is.
Do you have another question?
Well, I'm just wondering, it is entirely the case that we could restrict the the industries that we have a concern to avoid, we could restrict that to the manufacture of those particularly, particular industries, rather than getting into retail sector issues, is that right?
You could, but I guess the comment I'd make there is, who's, who's worse, the manufacturer or the retailer? Say, for example, is the legal highs, as an example, which are now illegal, so we don't necessarily need to worry about that, is the manufacturer the the a problem, or is it the retailer? Or actually, is it both?
I think I'd be at the risk of getting into debate, your worship, if I answered that.
Following on from the formalising what we're currently doing, would you know how much in the last 10 years would be an amount that we haven't exceeded as a percentage in fossil fuels if we haven't to go down that route? If we said no armaments, no tobacco, like we've currently got, only formalised, in the sense that you're describing here, if we also added a, no more than a certain percentage fossil fuels, what would be the percentage that we would have been within?
Well, I I I can't comment on what percentage we would be within, but normally when you have an ethical investment policy, you say that you exclude a type of industry, and the the report that Russell Investments did indicated that if you did that, the impact on the fund would have been about five hundred thousand on a per annum basis. So that is what the impact is. One of the issues you you have to face, and we've spoken about it earlier in the year, was the big impact for having a socially responsible policy is that you have greater volatility, because whether we like it or not, sin stocks or those that can be perceived as not as ethical as others or socially responsible as others are tend to be counter cyclical. So that gives you that even spread of earnings, so.
Councillor McTavish, did you have, did you mention that you had a tentative motion?
I do have a a motion which I flicked through the genie, and what I, I don't know, your worship, are there no more questions?
Well, I, oh, I couldn't realise that you had, sorry, councillor Hawkins.
Thank you. As far as an assessment of possible financial implications of these approaches, which is what this report addresses, it seems to me that it only focuses on the negative, the potential negative financial implications to council had these policies existed over the past 10 or 14 years or whatever it is. There's no real mention of the possible financial implications should the carbon bubble burst or should we be left with stranded assets or those sorts of things. Was that not considered, or do you not see that as being a potential financial implication of this approach?
Well, first thing, the modelling that was done was historic, so unfortunately, my crystal ball is as cloudy as yours, and I can't tell when that's going to occur, if it's going to occur at all.
But it is a possible financial implication?
Well, it's possible that any type of industry can get distressed. If you were exposed to the banking sector in the UK and in America during the global financial crisis, you had some significant losses that you would have incurred. So any industry worldwide can be impacted by changes in the marketplace.
Thanks.
Any further questions? Okay, councillor McTavish?
Thank you, worship. The the draft motion that I have put together is basically an attempt to address all of the concerns that were raised by our community. So there may be some parts of the motion which are acceptable to those around the table and some which are not. If I talk through it from the top to the bottom, and your worship, you may wish to put one, A, B, C, D, E and F separately, which are the the different areas which we may wish to exclude.
Well, can I just take a pause there?
Yes.
Is, now that we've seen it, is there a secondary?
They may not wish to second it.
Councillor Hawkins, is a secondary, that's fine. I guess, in spite of her asking me that question, and I haven't had a chance to read the whole thing, but I would have thought that we, the first question to ask is, do we want an ethical policy at all? And if we do, then the tricky comes, well, what do you put in, what do you take out? But so that, I would, I would break it up if it were seen it that way, for the purpose of argument, I think.
Sure, okay, so depending on whether you want to, may have to slightly reword the fronting, but basically, at the moment, the the overriding statement, the overarching statement, which all of them is subsumed within, is that the council develop a socially responsible investment policy for the Waipori Fund based on the following criteria. Number one specifies a number of different areas that we may wish to exclude. One and two are clearly ones that we have been informally excluding anyway. Number three, the fossil fuel extraction industry, alcohol and gambling. Number three, the fossil fuel extraction industry, alcohol and gambling, as I understand it, the next most submitted upon issues that we had this time round in our, in the submissions we received. Pornography in the sex industry sat, I think, slightly further down the list. But when I looked up the relevant, or a number of ethical investment options online that already exist for people, pornography was included as an exclusion in the number of those, so that's why I've included it there. The second one is, the chief financial officer asked us to identify a materiality threshold or a percentage amount of revenue that would be considered, above which it would be considered inappropriate for us to be investing in these excluded industries. I find that difficult, given that we have little, given that for different industry types, it may be appropriate to have a different level. So for example, we may wish to have absolutely no exposure to tobacco and armaments. We may consider it more appropriate to have a limited exposure in some companies involved in the alcohol industry. When I looked at what is happening in terms of divestment overseas, in terms of fossil fuels, there are funds which are divesting down to about five percent materiality in relation to fossil fuels. So that's the reason why. Two is the lowest workable materiality threshold for each industry type, recognising that it may be different for each one. Number three is in relation to the fossil fuel extraction industry, in the event that a materiality threshold is applied. This is exclusion of the top two hundred companies by proven carbon reserves. And the reason for this is articulated in some of the submissions that we received. The difficulty with revenue-based materiality thresholds is that it fails to incorporate some of the biggest reserve holders of carbon. So there are lists of the top two hundred which are regularly updated, and they can be excluded. And four, this is recognising that we may not wish to divest everything overnight, and there may need to be a phased approach to divestment as we move down the materiality thresholds over no more than two years. And then five and six were things that people asked us for, but which may not be achievable, or counsel may not feel are workable. So I put them in there so that we can vote on them. The first is efforts to extend this policy to indirect investments where manageable within existing resource constraints, noting that we only have one fund manager, and that he is occupied in other things, and that this may be a difficult thing to achieve. And number six, guiding principles for the fund manager to be applied to reinvestment, which promote exclusion where the activities of the organisations involved, and there are four clauses there. So five and six are, I guess, probably moving up the difficulty scale in terms of what the fund manager could achieve, or what we could expect to achieve through a statement of investment policies and objectives. But I thought it appropriate that we, at least that I moved them, and that we vote on them to take a position on it.
If I could make an observation, it seems to me, and I may be mistaken, that seems to me that number six actually should go towards the beginning. Because where you mentioned the following criteria, what you then list are not so much criteria, as I think that you start off with saying, I think, this makes more rational sense to me, you start off by saying, these are the principles by which we're going to decide what we don't invest in, and agree on those, and then the others fall out, and we can vote on them separately. I'm just making a suggestion about the order in which.
I understand the way that you've interpreted it, but I think the way that I'm intending it is for all of these criteria, so one, two, six, to be incorporated as criteria in a statement of investment policies and objectives. And what people, I think, were asking in relation to reinvestment was that we were really conscious about reinvestment. So that's why six applies to reinvestment only, rather than to everything.
Okay, I understand that, but my question is, do you not need a set of criteria to determine what it is that you don't want to invest in, because that's at this stage absent?
If that's the will of the council, I'm willing to amend it to read that way. I guess what I felt, or what I, and what I continue to feel is that it is, there are a number of things which fall into this category. Some of them are incorporated within that six at the top. Some of them, and there are many that I would like to be including in that list, but which I think are probably unworkable in the first instance for our policy. So if we had broad criteria like these for the purposes of divestment, I think that we may find that difficult, and that's certainly the advice that I've had from the CFO.
That's fine, that's good, that clarified that. Okay, do you wish to speak to it now, councillor Hawkins? councillor Benson Pope.
Oh, we're having the debate, are we?
Yes, this is, it's been moved and seconded, the mover has spoken, and now we're in.
Thank you. I'm generally in support of developing a policy in this area that formalises what we've been doing informally, and extending it beyond those couple of categories that were historically excluded. But I am concerned, oh, and I should say, in reading the submissions, and I think I said this when this first was raised to council, it's hard to argue against an ethical investment policy, because then you've got an unethical investment policy. So good luck if you're going to run that one, councillor Calvert, or anyone else. But I am concerned that the last, some of the categories, the six that we may or may not be moving, is extremely subjective. For example, on my reading, would exclude investment in dairying just now, because of the damage, long-term damage that has been done to our waterways by dairying runoff. And I'm not sure we necessarily want to do that, there might be some councillors around the table who wouldn't. Not mentioning anyone in particular. But having raised that reservation, in general, I'm in support of developing a policy of this kind. I have to say that I have been contacted by people and sent the addresses and the information to the CFO, who are very familiar with exactly this sort of policy, and the various ways of developing it. So I think we have Dunedin residents, longstanding Dunedin residents actually, who are able, and would be, I'm sure, more than willing to help in putting the flesh on the bones with this beast. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stansfield.
I'm also in support of the ethical investment policy. I'm a little bit concerned that, and it's probably what happens in developing the policy itself, it gets too complex and becomes too administratively burdensome. So I definitely support the not having direct investment in tobacco or armaments. I think actually for fossil fuels, I think the two hundred top carbon reserve holders might be a better way of dealing with it, rather than trying to pick out who's selling petrol, or who's selling lubricants, or. At the end of the day, what we're trying to express is a desire not to increase the amount of carbon that is being found and intended for use. So when it comes down to alcohol, you could stop the ethanol industry for supplying fuel for cars with the term alcohol. You could stop the production of methylated spirits, because it's alcohol. I think we would need to think a lot more about some of those in how we word the policy. So in principle, I fully agree. I think we need to be careful as we develop the policy not to make it such that it becomes burdensome. But other than that, I think it's the right way to go.
councillor Benson.
I'm a little confused as to how the question of ethical investment got shoehorned into a question on all submission forms in the first place. My personal feedback from the population is that by far, most of them really don't care whether we ethically invest or not, and most of them don't even want us to go there. councillor Benson Pope has said that if you're not ethical, then you're unethical. Unfortunately, councillor Benson Pope doesn't realise that it's a classic case of illogic. It's one of those, if you're not for us, you're against us situations. It's tantamount to saying, if you're not religious, then you're irreligious. Most people don't worry whether we're ethical or unethical. Investment is just investment, this is small bananas in the scheme of things anyway. Whereas it's very nice to get on your high horse and want to have all sorts of policies written around how ethical you are. What are the ethics, for instance, of a wantonly wasteful bureaucracy? Should that not be in the list somewhere between alcohol and pornography? It certainly wastes a lot more money than either. And if you are, if you're going to be consistent about any of this, well, you can't. My suggestion is that what we really want to do is not climb into this to anything like the depth that we've already gone in. My suggestion would be that we simply formalise the existing informal ethical investment policy that we had, and that is that we avoid direct investment in alcohol and armaments, these are pretty obvious. Everything else is up for grabs, depending, sorry, tobacco. Everything else is dependent pretty much on how high you want to set your ethical standards. And in representing the population of Dunedin, a population who very much partake of a lot of these industries which we are planning not to invest in, I think for us to be truly representative, we need to recognise that there's a demand reason for all of these things existing, and that we're not here, and I don't believe that we've been elected to be the ethical high ground and tell people how they're going to ethically live their lives. We're here to basically use rates in an efficient and effective manner. I don't think spending a lot of time and money getting a detailed policy like this is going to afford any of that. And I will be voting against all of these detailed ideas. I much favour the initial recommendation in the paper on seven point one that simply says that council considers the development and adoption of a socially responsible investment policy. And I've noted that the answer to, can that be just formalising the policy that we've got, the answer to that was yes.
Foreshadowed a motion?
Thank you, yes please.
Right, councillor Calvert.
I think we're muddling up a few things here. But I think what we have been told, and what everybody out there needs to know, if anybody votes for putting fossil fuels into middle of this, is that that's costing our ratepayers likely five hundred thousand dollars each and every year. So just before we vote, I think we should be telling our ratepayers that we are prepared to do that on behalf of whoever thinks that's appropriate ethically. I think as a second thing, that, there's a whole lot of words in there, but six in particular has within it the overall negative impact on social and community outcomes. That can mean absolutely anything, I can't see how our fund manager can possibly carry out that. I would have thought, for instance, from my point of view, dropping half a billion dollars per year has a social and community outcome, which you wouldn't want to do. I don't know what it means apart from that. I think there's a whole lot of words, and I would be prepared to second councillor Van de Wissens foreshadowed motion if he's going back to putting into practice what we're currently doing, which we do understand, and excluding direct investment in armaments and tobacco.
I already have your name mentioned, councillor Van de Wissens, on the foreshadowed motion, so. Fine, and I will be putting as the suggestion of the mover, I think most of these separately, so that, that's the will of the council, so that people have the option of accepting some parts of it and not necessarily others. councillor Thompson.
Sorry, can I just add a comment, clarification? The Russell report, when they did that work, they excluded fossil fuels, alcohol and gambling, as well as the current exclusion, so it wasn't just fossil fuels that was driving that variation in the return, in drop and return.
Thank you, councillor Thompson.
Look, I'm generally in support of this, I think that I am inclined to view that there's probably more detail in it than it's reasonable to expect. I need to say that I don't actually think that the Waipori Fund should be investing in anything. I think it should be using that capital and loaning it to the DCC, and the DCC should be paying interest to the Waipori Fund each year, and we wouldn't have to worry about any of this stuff, we wouldn't have to hedge our debt, because we'd have a natural hedge. We wouldn't have to take risks against currency movements, any of those things. So for me, the most ethical investment policy would be a completely different one again, but I accept that we can't do that overnight, even if it were the will of council to do it, because investments would have to be progressively liquidated over time. In any way, we've got so much hedge debt that we couldn't simply repay it all in the short term. But I just think we're actually trying to solve a problem with Waipori that we don't actually need to have in the first place. Having said all that, given that we do have it, and that we do make investments, I think it's reasonable to make ethical investments. I think councillor Van de Wissens says we're trying to tell other people how to lead their lives. No, we're not, we're trying to make a decision about how we invest our money, not how anybody else invests their money. So I think it is overly complicated, I'm not quite sure how one simplifies it on the hop, but I do take the, councillor McTavish's comment that she has attempted to put these in level of materiality and level of difficulty, which gives the opportunity to drop some of them out as we go.
Okay. Do you want to alter something as the mover, councillor McTavish, or?
No, I was just indicating that I'd like to use my right of reply when it's appropriate.
Certainly. Are there any other speakers? councillor Wiley.
Personally, I keep looking at this and seeing it's a dig at the fossil fuel industry, and continually see, you know, the same councillors really having a dig at what potentially could be a great industry for our town, for our city. And to see this being basically put up here like this is, to me, is ridiculous, but anyways. If we're really going to focus on, and let me just, I'll take a step back. Out of those A, B, C, D, E and F, I agree with all but C. And the reason I do that is because if we're really going to look at greenhouse gas emissions and the planet, then really, when I look at some of the stuff online, sustainablebrands.com, fifty of the world's five, fifty of the world's five hundred largest companies are responsible for nearly three quarters of the world's, you know, greenhouse gases. So are we going to start excluding these companies from our portfolio based on what their carbon emissions are? I think if we're really going to tackle some of those issues, then that's where we would go. You know, it's just, I just get really frustrated to see us tackle this in this way. You know, there's enough information online to see where some of these institutions are going with their trends in environmental, and environmental investing. You know, the one that I can't believe you haven't included is human rights. I would have thought that would have been right there. No, I would have thought it would have been in the, direct there. Because when I look at, you know, environmental, social governance and investing areas, I see human rights, weapons and military, tobacco, landmines, cluster munitions, and adult entertainment. So I'm sort of looking at that, so when you look at globally what's happening in these industries, you want to pull out one segment of the market, which, you know, I hate to admit it, I even looked at the oil free Otago page, and saw that, you know, according to them, the Waipori Fund had invested one point seven million into fossil fuels, which worked out to be two point two four percent. I'm sorry, I don't think that's, you know, a number that we really can discern. Definitely not getting to 10%. So I think we really have to sort of say, okay, some of those issues are really real. Pull out fossil fuels and away we go. But, you know, let's focus on what our city's about, what our economy is based on. And if you're pulling one just to, pulling one out just because you don't like it, I don't think that's the right reason to be treating this fund.
Well, as I said, I will, I am prepared with the Royal Council to take them separately. So you have the option, councillors have the option of voting on each of them separately. Councillor Hawkes.
Thank you. It's a shame that councillor Wiley seems to take this motion so personally. And perhaps the natural gas lobby are projecting just a little bit in that regard. Because it's not, for me, it's as much about consistency as it is about ethics. There's no point in us having a smoke-free policy as a council and then turn around and say, we're quite happy to profit from the tobacco industry in the same way. That we can't go to our community and say, we're going to work with them to deal with climate change adaptation and mitigation, and then say, we're happy to profit from the industries that will exacerbate those very same issues. So all I'm suggesting is that our approach to investment is not just along ethical lines, although it is, should these be considered, but also a better fit with our stated policies and strategic objectives more broadly. Because to try and set this aside from all of the other work that we're trying to do in our community, I think is foolish. We know that there are going to be serious problems in the low-lying areas of Dunedin. And that's just modelled on the fourth IPCC report. The fifth one is only going to, when we finally get to be able to take that seriously, is only going to make that, make those predictions more dire and more urgent. And to financially gain from the escalation of that issue is unethical and immoral. And I'm sure councillor McTavish will be able to highlight these arguments a lot better than I can. But I intend to fully support these motions. Thank you.
Councillor Law.
I suppose I should really refer first to David Bedson Pope. There are some dairy farmers that don't wreck the environment, David, so I'll just have you know that. And I'd love to welcome you at a farm for a tour around to see some of the things we're doing. But I too cannot support C, fossil fuel extraction, perhaps for different reasons than people think. But the main reason is, as Deputy Chair of Infrastructure Services or Infrastructure Committee, and I think of the percentage of our budget that gets spent on ash felt and fill, and I believe there are some oil fill heaters around some of the council buildings, I wouldn't feel comfortable, I would see it as hypocrisy. And in the foreseeable future, there is no alternative. And these companies that no doubt some councillors will tell us are greedy and exploitive, making huge profits, I'd be happy to see some of that profit come back to the people that use their products. Effectively, we're only getting some of our own money back. So I think it's just hypocrisy to say we're not going to have a part of it. I'm happy to leave the others in or out, but I think particularly I would support a motion such as councillor Vandevos suggested, exclusion of what we already do, which is tobacco and armaments. Not that I'm necessarily pro-alcohol gambling or pornography. I'm just not sure what depth we invest in them anyway, so.
Councillor Wilson.
I'd first like to say that I welcome this motion as being one that reflects a large number of submissions and the opportunity to decide if we want to take it up. That's how I read it and I regret some personal comments made about them actually being put on the table to be discussed. This is what people submitted on, this is totally the platform that they should be put up and decided upon. Last year, I decided that council staff should not be making decisions on fluoride. I thought it should be something that was delegated by government to us as councillors. And I think equally, these are issues that we should, as councillors, be standing up and making a call on and not delegating to staff. So again, I welcome the motion and the chance to discuss it. I however do have some concerns. I think it would be totally hypocritical for me to do number three, considering I would be the worst offender around this table. Yeah, I would rather abstain than vote fraud, albeit I have huge amount of sympathy with Dunedin. Very good number of submissions on it. I was amazed by the number of submissions with really good information on all of these. I will, I'm going to pull out on the gambling one, just in case we need a panel to decide on gambling at some stage. And again, I have some problems with alcohol, considering I'm in the industry slightly in retail. So I'm going to definitely support tobacco armaments and pornography. I feel I've got a ton of conflict on fossil fuels and alcohol. But I really welcome the motion and the ability for us to vote around the table for it, which is what I think the intention of the mover was.
Thank you, councillor Pete.
Thank you. I'm in support of the thrust of this. I think we got a good signal from the submitters. Two hundred and ninety-sixth second most popular category to be submitting on. And the bulk of them were for us to take some positive action. And I think most people, it seems to me anyway, would want us to go beyond just what we've been doing up till now and then fall away. So I'll think about how I do the voting down A to F, but I'm supporting the bulk of them anyway. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers?
I'm just going to take the opportunity to give my thoughts on this. Going right back to councillor Vandevos's question, how it's got on the paper. In a sense, it doesn't matter. The vast bulk of the submitters overwhelmingly came back and told us that they supported ethical investing. So I don't think it's reasonable to conclude that the bulk of our community actually doesn't care. They do, and they've said so. And I certainly support that principle. I would also point out that some of them, quite a number of them, accepted that there may be some cost, some financial cost, and they accepted that for the sake of principle, they were prepared to pay that. I think there are different reasons for the exclusions in various things. For instance, it occurs to me that some of the research being done, having been done recently, shows that the reasons for people opposing investment in fossil fuel extraction are around perceived risks going forward and stranded assets and actually losing money on it. So it becomes an unethical, as opposed to an unethical issue, is it a wise thing to invest in? As well as the ethical reasons that some people believe. I accept, and I also struggle with advocating not investing in things that I use. For instance, I do use fossil fuels and I do use alcohol. So I think you have to look at what effect your disinvestment might have. And switching investments can actually encourage and create alternatives. A lot of people would argue that one of the reasons that there aren't alternatives to liquid petroleum products is that there's too much money being made out of, too much investment going into those, and therefore there's not the option. And equally, I struggle a little bit with the personal nature of alcohol because, you know, apart from legal highs, there are options. So that's it. I'll decide which ones I can go and which I can't. But I certainly support this overwhelmingly in principle. And as I said, I intend with the council's permission, put it in, put them as, in separate items as much as we can to give everyone as much choice as possible.
Councillor McTavish, your word of advice.
Thank you. If you wish it. I think in reflecting on what's been said around the table, the first thing that I would acknowledge is the fact that this isn't, this is the city's money, this is ratepayers' money, this is citizens' money. And the choices that we around this table make in relation to that money fall on everybody. So any resident can go and choose to invest in any one of these excluded industry types, should they wish to do so, should they feel ethically fine with that. I think our responsibility is to ensure that those who do not wish to invest in industry like these have the option to say that they're not invested in them. And at the moment, every single one of our residents is potentially invested in these things because we haven't made a decision to the contrary. So it's not about making ethical choices for other people. It's about ensuring that they have a choice to make. The second point that I would make is that, yeah, I mean, I think there are difficulties. I think we all have difficulties in relation to various different parts of these. I think councillor Staines's point about alcohol is a really good one. And on the basis of that point, I may not support my own motion in that regard, given its importance as a potential fuel into the future. However, in relation to fossil fuel extraction, and I must stress that this is fossil fuel extraction, it's not retail, it's not Z energy, they're a retailer, it's extractive fossil fuel industries. We are embedded in a system which has been, which is based upon decades and decades of fossil fuel carbon intensive investment. That's not our fault. That's no one's fault. That's just the reality of our system and the way that we currently are. Another reality is that we have to leave 80% between two-thirds and four-fifths of the fossil fuels that we have already discovered as a globe, they need to remain in the ground. If we were to give our future generations, in fact, current generations, a chance at a safe climate future. That's not a guaranteed chance, that's a four in five chance. That's an 80% chance at a safe climate future. So I acknowledge that there are difficulties when we are embedded in this fossil fuel based system. But the reason for the campaigns that are happening globally at the moment to remove fossil fuels from various different public funding or public investment funds is an acknowledgement of the need to transition and to transition rapidly. And the companies aren't doing it themselves, so that is why the request has come. And I think it's come quite strongly from our community. So to the Chair and Deputy Chair of IS, yes, I acknowledge that both of you are currently charged with managing a highly fossil fuel dependent system. But that's not your fault, that's no one's fault, that's just where we're at. And we need to make that transition and we need to make it rapidly. And you are also stewards of an integrated transport strategy document which designs a path away from that system. So the last two points that I would make, the modelling, which the Russell investment modelling was based on past trends. And I think it is important to acknowledge that this is a rapidly emerging space. A lot of the work that has been done has shown that if we do remove these things from our portfolio, there is likely to be more volatility. But in terms of the actual impact on funds going forward, the actual net impact, there is absolutely no clarity about whether or not it would actually benefit our fund or there of less benefit to our fund. And I think to suggest anything to the contrary with any certainty is unfortunate and inappropriate. Finally, I would say that this is a starting point. I think the issues that councillor Thompson raises about the relative merits of using this fund in the way that we're currently using it are very live issues and ones that we need to be cognisant of, particularly in our current financial situation. And I have absolute faith in the work of staff and Deputy Chairs of Finance to lead us forward in that regard. It's also a starting point in terms of some of the things that our community has asked us to include here are not included. And I acknowledge that that might be difficult for some people, but it is a starting point. And I think it's possibly a starting point that will enable us to build on it into the future. So with that, you wish it. I'll hand it over to you.
I note that, and I'm just working out how I can put these separately. I note that the preface sentence really applies to all of the following, one, two, whatever it is, five or six. So I'm going to start with one, but the assumption is that that sentence, that the council develop a socially responsible investment policy for the Waipori Fund based on the following criteria, prefaces each one of them.
Point of order. I believe that as it stands, you need to take the whole motion in one. Because as you've just pointed out, the opening phrase refers to following criteria as the whole lot.
No, well, I've decided that it's being taken separately. I've ruled on that. That's how I'm ruling.
Against standing orders.
No, it was a point of order and you've asked me to rule on it. That's what point of orders do, and I've ruled.
I just wondered whether we, it's late, but modify it, say the council develop a socially responsible investment policy for the Waipori Fund, and then that the following items.
Point of order.
So you're actually breaking, breaking those two because there will be.
I believe that this motion has been put, seconded, and is about to be voted on, and that it's no longer appropriate to discuss alternatives to it, much as I would like to.
I'd need some guidance. I don't see personally why it can't be, the wording can't be changed so long as the meaning remains the same in order for clarity of outcome to be established.
My understanding is that understanding orders, once the speakers, the movers had their right of reply, we're then required to simply vote on it.
Mister Chairman, since the very beginning of this discussion, you have stated on a number of occasions, you're going to do it bit by bit. So I don't think there's any inconsistency in the procedure. And I don't know about other councillors, but I was expecting not only a vote on each clause, but a vote on one A, one B, one C and one D, that would then yield whatever our interim policy might be.
Which was indicated by the mover and confirmed. And if the standing orders don't allow it to be, wording to be changed, we can still do it the other way. It'll have the same effect, but it won't be so clear. So we can stand on that.
Well, it says that once the, after movers commit such a reply or a reply, or having spoken, the chairperson has intended, was intentioned to put the motion, rather than the Waipori mass stake on the motion. So it's in a bit.
So I shall revert to the way I was going to do it, which is that you can take it that the preface sentence applies to each of the following parts that I take separately. Councillor Law, is this a procedural point of order?
Yeah, I think so. I'm just wondering, in relation to the things we vote above, does that also include two, three, four, five, six, all those points?
The whole thing.
So how does someone that doesn't agree with some of those things vote against them?
I'm going to take, I'm going to take, just to be absolutely clear, I'm going to take one A, one B, one C, one D, one E, one F. Two, three, much choice is possible.
Have you got the last one or are you going to take right through the last one, do you? And are you going to take six as dot points in the video?
A as well? A, B, C, D.
A, B, C.
Yeah.
Yes, I can, I'm quite happy to do that. So can you put A, B, C, D, D? Right. Here, just watch it. All right. Right, so I'm going to move the first one, which is the first sentence and A, one A, tobacco. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried.
I wish to abstain on the basis, and I'd like it recorded, that I do not believe that this piecemeal representation of the motion is valid in terms of logic or process.
I'm going to take the second one, the first sentence and one B, armaments. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried.
And I wish to abstain for the same reason.
Okay.
And you can take it all the way through just to save your time.
Do you want to have an omnibus abstention at the end? Or do you, are there some that you?
No, no, an omnibus abstention at the, abstention at the end would be fine.
Okay, we'll make sure it's recorded. No. Number one, C, fossil fuel extraction. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Could I have a show of hands, please? All those for? All those against? It's carried. Sorry?
What was the numbers?
Yes, could you record the?
Um, what?
A division, please, yes.
It's too late for a division, isn't it? It's been put. One D, alcohol. All those in favour, please say aye. All those against?
No.
That one's lost. One, I'm feeling really guilty now. One E.
Which one?
Gambling. Um. Oh, you would, councillor Wilson's drawing is from gambling. Just getting the better of it. One E, gambling. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
It's carried. And one F, pornography. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. On to two. The last work of materiality special for each industry type as a criteria. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Could I have a show of hands on that, please? All those in favour, please put your hands up.
Up here, please.
All those against? It's carried. Number three, yep, two, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Another, a show of hands again, please. All those in favour, one, two, three, four, five. All those against? It's carried. Number four, phased, it should be, yes, phased approach. All those, could we just? All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
I'll have another show of hands. One in favour, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Well, that's definitely carried. Eight, all those against? Eight, four. Number five, it's too extensive. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
It's lost. Number six, number six A. To be, to give everyone as much choice as possible, having an open or negative outcome associated with community outcomes. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
It's lost. Six B, would be illegal in New Zealand. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
It's carried.
I'll say yes and aye.
It's for the human rights of the youth.
Six C. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Show of hands again, please. Division on that, please. Okay.
Councillor Benson-Pope.
Aye.
Councillor Calvert.
No.
Councillor Hall.
No.
Councillor Hawkins.
Aye.
Councillor Lord.
No.
Councillor McTavish.
Aye.
Councillor Pete.
Aye.
Councillor Staines.
Aye.
Councillor Thompson.
Aye.
Councillor Vander, sorry, sorry. Councillor Wiley.
Aye.
Councillor Wilson.
Aye.
You worship.
Aye.
Eight, four.
Carried, eight, four. And finally, six D. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Right, we're going to have another show of hands.
Division.
Division, please.
Councillor Benson-Pope.
Aye.
Councillor Calvert. Councillor Calvert.
Councillor Calvert.
Sorry, we said a no. Councillor Hall.
No.
Councillor Hawkins.
Aye.
Councillor Lord.
No.
Councillor McTavish.
Aye.
Councillor Pete. Councillor Staines. Councillor Thompson.
Aye.
Councillor Wiley.
No.
Councillor Wilson.
Aye.
You worship.
Aye.
Carried.
Carried, aye. Thank you. That concludes that. But now, you have recorded councillor Van de Wiss's abstention. And you've recorded the reason. Right, now we'll move on to. Now, councillors, we move on, thank you, Fran and Jane. We'll move on to item eleven, because the intermediate items are being dealt with on later days. So we're on to item eleven, a best to save option, civic energy efficient lighting upgrade. Welcome. Do you want to preface this with anything or do you want to just take questions?
Be happy to just to take questions.
Questions, councillors? Councillor Van de Wiss.
Have you been able to quantify the amount of invest to save ratio that we would actually end up with if, for instance, we changed all the lighting in our buildings to LEDs? Have you got even a rough order of if we expend X thousands, how many more thousands do we get back over the life of the LED lights?
Not for all our buildings. For the Civic Centre, we would get savings of thirty-five thousand dollars a year based on an investment of, it was two-twenty.
An investment of?
Yeah, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand.
So that two-hundred-and-twenty thousand would just be year one?
And we would get thirty-five thousand every year thereafter? Yes, that's energy savings and maintenance savings.
And what's the life of the LEDs?
We can.
Ten, ten, ten to twenty-five years usually.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Pete?
Thank you, and the options on eleven point three. I'm just wondering about ECA and the disadvantage around the risk of ECA being available. Did they support the City Library and why would we be uncertain about the funding?
That's because of changes to their funding next year. They're just not sure that they're going to have as much in their budget for supporting this kind of project. But that's, it's totally uncertain.
So if we had a full budget to complete the Civic Centre as well as the City Library in the current year, we would have got ECA funding of fifty-five thousand for the Civic Centre building. We didn't have the full amount to, of our share, so we didn't get ECA's share.
Councillor Littler.
Well, you worship, there's an overriding energy question which I have and it's really for the chief executive and it relates to what I would think was most appropriate in relation to this budget. So I wonder if I could ask that now. And that is, it seems in both this report, the eleventh, Report eleven and Report twelve, it seems that if we were to want in time for the long-term plan a series of costed options in terms of energy efficiency and invest to save options, which were prioritised according to what would deliver us best bang for buck rather than what was at the top of the pile, we would probably need some additional staff resource to do that work. Is that right?
You're probably best wise to policy team.
Yeah, actually, we're working to do that in two ways. One, we're going through the carbon footprinting the second time around with Landcare and that includes this time around them helping us to establish a carbon reduction plan. The other way that we're doing it is we're planning, because of the work we've been doing on the energy plan and the arrangement that we have with Energy Link, the energy consultants in Dunedin, for them to start to look at for us ranking a series of energy efficiency projects in-house. So I hope that we will have something for you for the long-term plan that looks more like a ranked list rather than just project ideas one at a time.
So is it the case then that there is no requirement for an additional staff resource to progress this work over the next twelve months? Because what, the situation that I don't want to be in is the situation whereby we don't have potential invest to save options on the table for us when it comes to LTP budget time, given how valuable those potential savings might be in buying us some more room.
So you've nominally, or you've in the draft budget, put in a fifty thousand dollars budget for investment of invest to save options. In the discussions with the team, we think the vast bulk of that is likely to be used up in energy invest to save because there is a directly quantifiable and fairly immediate return that we can, that we can calculate. But it is fair to say that the policy work team, they have had their numbers cut as part of the overall staff, staffing budget cuts. So they are a trimmed down, all-up team and, and we don't take much off their work programme. Or in fact, exactly the opposite, we continue to add to their work programme. So some things have to be juggled around. If we add more on, there'll be things that have to wait. It's a matter of deciding what the priorities are.
I guess where I'm going with it is that there's one hundred and sixty thousand dollars here which was tagged to energy invest to save. And we have an additional fifty thousand which we have nominally put in the budget for invest to save and you're saying a lot of that will be used for energy. Is it the case that some of that fund, either pool, should be used to invest in the staff resource to enable that work to progress, to get those possibilities to a worked-up point that we can make some decisions around them come LTP budget time? Or is that a decision that you feel comfortable making within the delegated authority that you hold with that fifty thousand dollar budget?
Yeah, yeah, we can make that, we can make that call. Look, I would be reluctant to use the hundred and sixty thousand that's there that we've, you know, that we're looking to carry forward because that is money to actually spend on lighting upgrade stuff, which starts to give us a return. A person gives us a return but a little bit further down the track and we know there's some savings coming in here. That fund that you've put in place perpetually can look at being renewable. If we get enough of these rolling off the line, they start to add on top of each other and once the debt is paid off, they're all up, they're all up gain. And so you start to get into a bit of a self-funding mechanism, but that's two or three, four years down the track probably.
Thank you.
My question's in similar vein. I might be pushing it here, but, but the, the ability to investigate other options rather than just this one, the one that worries and intrigues me at the same time is our street lighting. And the, I know that we, we have funding in the long-term plan to upgrade that, but, but I'm not sure I understand just what kind of an advantage there might be in terms of ongoing savings if that were pulled forward and how that might rank against, for example, this one. Not necessarily picking on this one, but for example, this one. And so I'm equally just a bit nervous about treating this in its, you know, as a side.
It is a bit difficult for us to comment on the street lighting one because some of that funding is dependent on NZTA funding. So I think that one gets into a tricky area. What we are looking at for the street lighting one is what can be leveraged, what else can be leveraged for when we do do the street lighting upgrade off of that. So I think it's hard for us at this point in time to have any kind of feeling of ranking of projects. We don't, we haven't had that work done. But I would hope that by the long-term plan, we have a proper ranked list for you.
And the other thing about the street lighting, if I can interrupt, is to say there's a bit of discussions going on nationally around the councils for what is the timeframe that different councils are looking to convert with a view to having large contracts that can gain maximum delivery at minimum cost because we all can leverage off each other across the various councils. Ones who can afford it more quickly and ones who can't afford it so quickly means you can kind of even out the delivery and potentially get best possible bang for buck. And some of Tony's team are pretty actively involved in some of those discussions too, so.
Councillor Benson-Pope.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. In terms of this report for the Civic Centre proposal, are you confident that in terms of the specification and the invitation for the tenders and the low tender that you refer to with that payback period of seven and a bit or whatever it was, is actually real rather than illusory? Are you confident in the proven quality of the LEDs that are, on which that tender is based? And do, would you expect them to yield the tend to quarter of a century of life that is, might be available?
Yeah, I would say that we don't do that analysis ourselves. We rely on the fact that the suppliers that we invite to tender are ECA-approved. So I would say we're fairly confident in the technology.
You're fairly confident that ECA's done its job?
Yeah, I think so.
Can I just ask a second one? I've seen a lot of public buildings overseas that have a monitoring, reporting, real-time, reporting, monitoring regime for energy use. Do we do anything like that? I don't necessarily mean the rolling neon or LED on the ground floor, but in terms of being aware of current energy use and potential savings?
We, we did look at that and we put it in the tender the first time around. But it, it really does crank the cost up and reduce the, it makes the payback period a lot less attractive.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor Van de Wiss.
I'm just looking at this cost of two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars to fit LED lights for the Civic Centre that you've just quoted. I've been sending Mister Neville Orton, the previous Efficiency Manager, a lot of information that I routinely get from LED suppliers in China that would indicate that a standard T8 four-foot fluorescent can be bought for about ten US dollars. And that's on a one-off, you could get a much better price on bulk. This being the case, it would suggest that there's something like twenty-two thousand lights at the Civic Centre, which I can't believe. I'm just wondering, this, this cost price of twenty-two thousand dollars seems to me to be. I'm just wondering, this, this cost price of twenty-two thousand dollars seems to me to be excessively high, based on the prices that I've been forwarding to Mr. Orton for quite some time now. Given that there would be some reason for it, have you considered, rather than looking at changing all the lights over in one go, have you considered simply changing the, uh, lights as they fail with LED fittings? And not buy them in a big chunk, and simply rolling them over, so that there wouldn't be the big upfront cost? But you'd still be phasing in ten-year, twenty-year savings in electricity, uh, as you went along, and saving some, uh, fittings as well, because of the less heat produced.
I guess I could say two things to that. One, I don't know anything about the fittings that you and Neville are talking about, and so we're, we rely on the ECA-approved fitters and the ECA-approved technology. I think if we got into going down our own path and sourcing our own LED fittings, that would mean that we would have to somehow be able to assess how good those products are, and I, I don't think we have either the resource or the expertise to do that.
All you have to do is go on Wikipedia and it'll tell you.
I, I think we would have some issues around that, I think we'd have some health and safety issues around that. I, I'm not thinking that's a viable path, as to, I, as I'm putting it on.
Is, is, sorry, the viable path that you don't think is viable, is that the one where you simply replace a fluorescent tube with an LED tube?
I think what I'm saying is that for, for the council staff to be able to assess products like that, I'd say that we don't currently have the expertise to do that. So if we were to take the products that are not approved by the central government agency, I think that's a decision for you, if you want, A, you want us to be able to take that risk, but, um, yeah, I guess it's a decision for you if you want, but I think there are some quite strong legislative requirements for us to be really sure that we're happy with the products.
So you're saying that you think there's a health and safety risk with updating old-fashioned fluorescent tubes with new LED ones?
I'd say if you don't know about the product, you can't, you can't really have a opinion on the health and safety, for example, of the product. The health and safety implications, I, I, I just think you don't know that, that's an unquantifiable. I couldn't have an opinion on it.
Thank you.
Well, I just, the question that I have for you, i- is for you, your worship, and it's just around process, and that is, um, I have no problem carrying forward the, um, the, the money which is allocated, but, um, I find it difficult to vote on whether or not to allocate a further sixty thousand without having made some other decisions, which we're going to be making in the next couple of days. So I wonder whether we could, um, I, I'm quite happy to move option B, which I think is the right one, to, to carry forward this existing budget, the, the, the budget that, um, remains, um, and if we were able to just bookmark it and revisit it, um, at the end of.
Well, we, as we said right at the beginning, we, we have a motion at the end where we revisit everything. So if this, um, if you want to move something, I'm, I'm about, I'm about to take it. Um, and it clearly allows, it leaves opportunities or options, um, to everyone, whereas, uh, other, um, options, options, um, so I'm happy to take the motion.
I'm happy to second option B, if that's what.
You're moving option?
I'm, I'm happy to move option B, as long as I'm, I'm aware that we can potentially revisit this later, should we, should it come up as a priority for us after we've had other discussions.
Well, my suggestion is that you move it and it's seconded, and it includes, uh, a phrase encapsulating. Yeah, compliment at the end of the week, sorry.
Well, I know that you moved it at the beginning, um, so, so we probably don't need that, but just highlighting that we may wish to come back.
Trust me. Okay. I'll take that smart, Snigger off the base, councillor Vanivis, if you don't mind. Um, all right, so is there any discussion on that? That, well, yes, we'll be, okay, option B has been, um, moved. I'll open it up for discussion.
I'm not sure, I guess it reads, it's quite, it's passing the term, because it would exclude, which is the thing.
The civic centre, yeah.
Uh, I think that if we were to say, uh, the answer was something, uh, the last.
It was about other, or just. Energy projects.
For, for any. Councillor. Could you use your microphone, Jenny can't hear you? Yes. Oh, sorry.
Other areas you have identified and all.
That, it just says, the unseen budget approximately one-hundred-thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty thousand is used for it, for any projects, including as yet unidentified, or any, including an, as yet unidentified energy project.
Effectively, that's a ca- a carry forward with a ring fence.
Yeah.
But you can still use it for the lighting upgrade, if that's the best call on the money, which would be great.
So, are we, uh, is the mover and seconder at one on the word?
You're not councillor Vanivis.
Short of mind-reading, can you get to that?
Getting up, oh, yeah, thank you councillor Wilson, she, councillor Wilson may want to move it.
It's been moved and seconded. Okay. Click that up and then I'll open it up for further, if you further discussion. Option B, be preferred, be that preferred option, I think, no, rather than be, be preferred that option.
Yeah.
Approximately, um, six thousand is used for any project, including as yet unidentified.
Take out the word project and replace it with a comma, because otherwise you can use it for any project. And you might not want us to use it for gambling. To be used for any, comma, including as yet identified, comma, energy projects. That would be good.
Yeah, fine, Lord, jeez. Yes.
Yep.
Right, yeah, mover and seconder, back to the back. Okay, um, councillor Thompson, did you have anything else to add to that? Councillor Stone.
I'm just struggling with what actually means, because we've identified some in the motion, so if they're identified, are they not included?
Any project.
Used on any?
Including the unidentified ones.
Okay.
So they can be used for energy projects, for this lighting.
Any councillor?
Sorry, just a question, um, what, where does that put in the sixty-five, the additional sixty-five thousand that's been in? Oh, that hasn't been added in?
So in speaking to the motion, the reason why I'm suggesting we do it this way is because I don't feel comfortable either rolling in or rolling out the sixty-five thousand dollars until we've had some discussions around other funding priorities this annual plan round. So that's why I'm suggesting we acknowledge that we move forward, or that we carry forward the one-hundred-and-sixty thousand, ring fence it for invest to save energy projects, and then potentially revisit the sixty-five thousand at a later point in, in deliberations.
Sorry, I was just giving clarification whether this was, this is in, the sixty-five thousand is in the draft annual plan currently. It's not.
The one-hundred-and-sixty is.
This is not what this says, that's fine.
Councillor Wilson.
I'm just wondering if, instead of putting option B, which refers to a report, which I never liked doing in the motion, it should instead say that subject to the final deliberations, council ring fence approximately one, well, not approximately, one-hundred-and-sixty thousand to be used for any, including as yet unidentified energy projects. Then you don't have to refer to, or carry forward, yeah. Then you don't have to refer to the report.
Sorry, I should have written the, yeah, before I said that moves up. So it's carry forward, not ring fence.
But I want a ring fence.
But it's used for any, including as yet identified energy projects.
Yeah, what about, what about, um, is, is used for invest to save energy projects? Is used for invest to save energy projects?
Right, councillors, the finalised motion is on the screens. Is there any further discussion? Right, there being none, I take it you, the mover, seconded one, speaker, right. Um. Does the mover want, um, do you want to, wrote a reply councillor McTavish, right, I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Carried. Thank you.